I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, June 7th, 2020 week at 7:49 PM. Board members here with me are Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Board Leader Michelle Shu, and myself. Please join Superintendent Dye as he gives us the mic.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homeland of the Kalaupulia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalaupulia were moved to the Grand Ron Reservation, and some were moved to the Sylas Reservation. It is important to note that Olive Lane County was and continues to be an important trading and gathering area for cameras and other resources. During the restoration era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederate tribes of Pous, Lower Umquah and Tsaiuswah Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron Indians, the Confederate tribes of Sylas Indians, the Coquell Indian Tribe, and the Cowcake Band of Umquah Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of our other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land, and we as fellow stewards of this land wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. First up on our agenda is to receive reports from our high school representatives. Does anybody want to go first? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Parker Anderson, and I'm the student representative for North Eugene High School. These past few weeks, we've definitely had a lot of stress due to finals, especially this week as they're going to have to take place. Our seniors have their senior stroll today, which is where graduating seniors have the opportunity to go back to their elementary school, walk through their graduation outfits, talking to their old teachers, and spending some time reminiscing. Overall, students definitely starting to have an end-of-year feeling. But despite that, there's still some important things to talk about. A few weeks ago, the board voted to raise the current North Eugene High School building. In lieu of that, it's built ahead of the years to what will happen to that space once the building is gone. I was able to talk to current students in North Eugene High School and discuss some of the options that have been brought up in the community and ask for their feedback on what they thought should happen. The vast majority of students gravitated towards either the proposed idea of a more field space, as currently sports teams have an ideal amount of space for the amount of programs we have, or the idea of having Eugene-Gotham Elementary School moved to the site with the construction of a new elementary school. There are a few other suggestions, such as a community park or swimming facility, but by far the most common question ended up being, why can't we build a new elementary school and construct a sports field? One student said, "North isn't a small school, and there's still quite a space around it. Why can't there's pockets to build a new elementary school and have a field next to it?" But in terms of numbers, out of the 121 students I have the opportunity to speak to, 75 students talked about liking the idea of an elementary school and supporting YG being a return to an area close to their previous location, while 42 students supported a new sports field, and four supported or suggested other options. I asked that when you're making your decision, you take into consideration the questions of students and their feedback. I'd also like to bring up another question that's been raised by multiple students over the past two weeks, which is the fate of some of the memorial structures in the Toden Bowl that are zia at North Eugene High School. Students are asking that, whatever's impossible, these things not be demolished with the school and moved to the new building. And finally, there was the second annual Pride Festival, put on by a few different 4J schools' GSAs, and held on the North Eugene High School football field last Friday. It was funded through fundraising efforts done through the GSA and by community donations. The event was wonderful, with crafts, food, and a few local vendors that have booths, a performance from the Eugene Gay Men's Chorus, and a drag show with professional drag queens and student volunteers. There were people of all ages in attendance, and everyone who went had an amazing time. I was happy to see some of our board members there, and I'm excited for the event to be able to continue in the future. While the event was wonderful inside, outside of the event, we did have a group about a dozen protesters from an out-of-state church that stood outside the school property shouting religious passages at students attending the event. The protesters also walked onto school property to hand out flyers to people in line for the event. The flyers looked supportive on the outside, but inside had some very hateful speech and certain graphic imagery, which I emailed pictures of, I believe, used to the board for contents. It definitely felt like an inappropriate thing to present to children who are trying to come together as a community and support each other. We are, though, grateful for the community members and staff who supported the event and are thankful for the support the board has shown thus far, and ask for continued support from both this board and future boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Okay, do you want to go next? You can pass. In that case, I think that Debbie or Jenna, I think you was going to share a video report from CHAZ, our Sheldon representative.
I'll try it. I think Jenna might have to relax.
We had a very active week with our musical programs, with musical exchanges from Sheldon alum-directed Lux Choral and the Lane Concert Choir. This weekend, the Sheldon Band hosted its jazz concert, and our Dubliner oral group had their solo night concert. We are hosting ASB elections this coming Friday, where we will be using a new student-led and created election process. We are celebrating as our softball team won state champs, "Go Irish!" There are many student-led activities that are coming up and have paths to recognize. Our AP English Literature students will be performing abridged versions of Shakespeare's King Lear and A Midsummer Night's Dream in this coming week. Our debate club hosted its first formal debate, and our astronomy club led a stargazing event for students. The National Honor Society hosted both this induction and graduation ceremonies, welcoming new members as the graduating members prepare to leave. We are starting a new tradition with the grad walk, where graduating seniors will have the chance to visit their elementary schools and say goodbye. Seniors will be attending the graduation ceremony this Saturday as they celebrate the end of their high school careers and look forward to all the future has in store. This will be my last school report in these meetings. When I first started this position, I was excited to give a voice to the students in my school. I came to these meetings excited for the opportunity to see the inner workings of my school district and how the board would operate in order to serve students. It only took a few meetings until the dysfunction of this board became apparent to me. I am not saying this to place blame on any individual on this board, rather to remind all of you that it is your responsibility to work together for the sake of our district staff, teachers, and students, and you all have failed. A few meetings back, there was a discussion on setting board goals. I have a few suggestions for all of you in the years to come. First, and most importantly, I urge you all to go into the next year with a spirit of collaboration. The disunity of this board has caused countless staff, students, and community members to lose faith in your ability to maintain your responsibilities. Show this community that you are capable of working together in order to serve our school districts and everyone inside. Secondly, I urge you to make efforts to ensure your policies and methods serve every single student in our schools. A few months ago, community members argued that equity is killing equality in our school district. This could not be further than from the truth. We have a history of not properly serving our minority and underrepresented students. I see this district as taking steps in order to fill the gap created by years of neglect, and I hope this is a pattern you will continue to follow in order to ensure every student is able to reach their potential, no matter if their background or the backlash these students will receive from the community. I hope this board will be able to work to create a better community for everyone in our school district. I will now step off my soapbox for a final time. I am appreciative of the opportunities this board has given me in the past year to share the thoughts of Sheldon's community. I hope you all will take my words to heart and do better than you did in the coming years. Thank you.
For us as well? So we move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Dye, you have the floor.
Thank you, and for those in attendance and in the listening audience. Tonight, we find ourselves for many reasons in a season of celebration. As we prepare to close out the academic year and marquee transitions in our students' lives, we have the opportunity to reflect on the vast body of work accomplished throughout our district. Together, our teams have wrapped up exceptional theatrical productions, held an outstanding middle school track season, and gathered together as affinity groups, including last week's successful second annual Pride Fest event. Our elementaries have hosted proud families and supporters of students who showed off their hard-earned musical talents and welcomed seniors back to welcome familiar halls to cheers with their younger peers. We celebrated with Sheldon's softball team as they completed their season as the state 6A champions and cheered for Churchill High School's Addison Klinky, freshman pole walter who flew into a new state record. Last Friday, we honored the 54 retirees who have collectively served more than 1,100 years in support of our students, community, and colleagues here in 4J. Later this week, we'll come together in celebration of the K-12 career of our seniors as they matriculate beyond our district, marking completion of years of tireless work, dedication, and care from the individuals that make up Team Eugene. As the year winds down, we turn our sights to the opportunities that lay in front of us and exciting summer intensives that will supplement the regular school year by connecting our students with extended learning. We're looking forward to the coming years we finalize this one, and we'll release the professional development calendar reflecting a narrowing of focus and intentional commitment to incorporating the requests of our talented educators to spend our precious time planning and in collaboration with their colleagues. This board, too, is preparing for a transition of its own, and it is important to note that this meeting marks the last time we will all be together in person. While there is one more meeting prior to the start of the oppositions, I along with many of the senior executive team will be participating remotely from the Coalition of Oregon School Administrators Conference. In light of that, I'd like to formally take the time to thank this board for their partnership. While we all agree there are opportunities for growth moving forward as a district, there is no denying of passion and dedication each of you brings to the role of a school board member. I want to ensure our entire community that we will collect important lessons from this year and build upon them for the coming fall. Most importantly, I cannot overstate my gratitude for the support, conversations, spirited dialogue, and unwavering grace that I have experienced from individuals across our system this first year of my superintendency. It is an honor to serve Eugene School District 4J as its 24th superintendent, and I'm really optimistic about the years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Dye. Next up on the agenda, we have items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at 4J... Oh, sorry, excuse me. and sets aside time of each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu/board /publiccomment, or you can contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes, and you cannot give their time to another speaker. The timer will count up, indicating when the speaker's time has arrived. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs, or complaints about individuals, including district staff or board members. The district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Please extend the same courtesy to members of the community. Please mind the timeline and the expectation of behavior. As chair, I'm charged with maintaining order in this meeting, and we'll have to call a recess if our meeting is disrupted, and this includes interrupting other speakers. Tonight, we have 10 people signed up to speak, and Debbie will be introducing each of you.
Thank you, Sherla Bassam. Our first speaker tonight is Aya Zoom. Michael Hutchins.
Hello, am I... All right. Hello, my name is Michael Hutchins, and I am a non-binary member of the Eugene community. Recent public comments at past meetings expressed harmful rhetoric against students of color and queer and trans community members. And I wanted to place my firm support behind those marginalized groups and urge the school board to do the same. In the United States today, as well as across the globe, there has been a rise in anti-trans, anti-queer, and anti-inclusive policies, bills, and bans. Just in this first half of 2023 alone, 556 anti-trans bills have been introduced around the US. Oregon and Eugene have overall presented a much safer space for the queer community than many other places around the country, and it's important to keep it that way. Trans and queer students of all types belong in our schools, events, communities, and deserve to feel safe and respected while doing so. They have a right to education and dignity, to access the products they need in educational environments, and to feel supported by staff and the school board. This idea extends to students and community members of color. We are living in a time of rapid history right now, with the age of the internet, and it has allowed for discussions to spread and grow. Alongside anti-trans and anti-queer bills, educational bills restricting the teaching of racial history in education, specifically that of the Black community, have been extremely prevalent. Priests' comments expressed concern with the Black Lives Matter phrase, one which is met a constant historical devaluing of Black bodies and lives, and pushed back against current systems and facets of inequality present in our societies today. That history deserves to be taught and recognized as it is present and is vital to how we interact with the world. Education should be rich and full. Students deserve to learn about the society and stand at it, and to feel seen and supported as they navigate a complicated world. This includes the continuation of anti-racist education spirit, to push against injustice and intolerance, and make sure those affected are safe and able to flourish. Social acceptance and support in all of this is critical to maintaining the mental health and well-being of trans and queer students and students of color. It aids better education, health of life, and it helps to ensure a lower rate of suicidality and social ostracization, a wave that is currently sweeping through our district. I used to attend South Eugene High School and have seen firsthand the mental health crisis. While not every student affected is of the groups I've discussed, many are, and many struggling fly under the radar. It is vital at this point in history that Eugene and 4J continue to make an inclusive and accepting space for all students to know they are safe and welcome, and to make sure we keep our footholds as a safe haven in a time of social unrest and bigotry. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Kayle McCollum. I'll just say to turn up my...
Parents have the constitutionally protected right to care, custody, and control of their children, not other people's children. This also includes the right to control their children's education and medical treatment. Last month, 4J School District was under fire because they assigned students a homework assignment where the kids were writing about their sexual fantasies. Last week, there was the 4J Pride Fest at North Eugene High School, where they had drag queens doing a drag show with very young children, sexualizing them in front of hundreds of people, and encouraging kids to explore their gender identities and use gender-confusing pronouns. There were adults there who were sexually aroused. This is inappropriate, the whole on public property using our tax money to groom children. They also had the Gay Men's Choir, who are famous for singing the song that "They're Coming for Your Children." 4J is encouraging children to be 2S LGBTQIA+, and this causes injury and sexual predation to children. It causes gender confusion that causes children to become uncomfortable with their developing bodies and identities, to see their bodies as malleable, and to reject their physicality and normalize medicalization of puberty. Gender-confusing pronouns undermine the self-confidence and resiliency by asserting that one's self-concept is dependent on external validation. They cause anti-resilience and pro-fragility. They uphold the illusion that misgendering or otherwise failing to conform to someone's illusions is abusive and violent. Gender-confusing pronouns encourages and endorses narcissistic behavior and personality-exploited behavior where children threaten and manipulate people when they don't get their way, and it gives children a sense of entitlement and lack of empathy and arrogance. "You better do what I say, or you're harming me." During online school during COVID, I witnessed in the social studies class, teachers teaching the class that white people are the oppressor class who oppresses the victim class, who are the non-white people, the women, and the 2S LGBTQIA+, and they do so with microaggressions and systemic racism. This is known as critical race theory. I also witnessed in the sex ed class, critical gender theory, where they showed a cartoon of gender identities that portrayed being trans as positive, like you're part of some inclusive community where everyone loves and respects you, and the school will protect you. This is very dangerous and is causing injury to students by encouraging them to be two-spirit, non-binary, and trans. Last month, Oregon passed the HB 2002, which allows children under the age of 18 to take puberty blockers and get sex changes and abortions without the parent's permission. It also will fine doctors who do not give a care, $6,250, imprison them for up to 364 days, and they will lose their license to practice medicine. It also covers out-of-state children, a cost that is approximately $80,000, and they hide the treatment from their parents. This is inappropriate, and the 4J School District should not be encouraging children to be injured like this. It's sexual predation.
We have a statement about decorum again, please? I just heard somebody say "bigot" that's completely improper.
I'm a conservative. No, you're a conservative.
I need everyone in the audience to... There's a lot of emotions here, and I completely understand and support them. And all of us, including those of us who are asking the board to behave in a certain way, please leave it to us to do that.
Should we note that nobody insulted the first...
Harry, this is not a conversation.
Nobody insulted the first commenter, they insulted the second.
Harry, I'm going to ask you to stop, or else you're going to be asked to leave. We can't disrupt the meeting, I'm sorry. Let's introduce our next person, Debbie, thank you.
Sure, our next speaker tonight is Paul Loren. I don't see Paul here tonight, so we'll go to... We will go to Rose Wild.
I just want to thank the board members for their service this year. And each of you has given a lot, so thank you. I'm also here because I received a call-in action from the Education and Justice Action Team, so thank you to the organizers and volunteers who made that happen. Before I continue, I want to alert the audience that my comments will refer to suicide. I'm a Kennedy parent, and I'm a volunteer organizer with Showing Up for Racial Justice Springfield, Eugene Chapter. Because of that role in my community, I get phone calls when hate activity happens in our community, and I got one last Friday. Thank you to mother for describing the Pride Festival and inside. The call was from a parent who was in tears because they were exposed to that toxic behavior, and their child had to pass through it and heard insults depicting just hurtful to them. She tried to talk to the people on the street corner that were making the comments, and despite having talked to a lot of people that she doesn't agree with, she was in tears by the end, and that's when she called me. So this matters to me because we know that 2S LGBTQIA+ students and any queer or trans youth are at high risk for bullying, for aggression, and for suicide. This matters to me because weaponized attacks against people who are in any kind of minority category, whether it's religious minorities, sexual minorities, racial minorities, immigrants, et cetera, those attacks are weaponized in order to specifically build radical movements. They are intentional, and they are organizing folks using hate. So we know that, we see it all over the country. This matters to me because I believe in our constitution and our democracy, and I believe that children should be able to go to school and be safe. This matters to me because my cousin Lavender committed suicide a few years ago after experiencing many years of depression and sadness and rejection because she was transgender and was not accepted by some members of her family and some members of her community. And she was a beloved and beautiful person who went to Standing Rock, who organized for everybody else's human rights, and I believe we should protect hers and people like hers. So in the future, I recommend continuing investing in hate response and biased response and visibility of all of the different beautiful people in this community, and engaging with the community so that when school staff are not able to respond, community members should respond in peaceful and nonviolent ways. Perhaps bucket screening is a way to...
Thank you. Our next speaker is online, Jesse... Is it Loesberg?
Loesberg, yes, thank you. Thank you. So my name is Jesse Loesberg. I am a 4J parent, and I'm speaking tonight because I think it's necessary to respond to the homophobic and anti-queer remarks we've been hearing in previous meetings, and we are now hearing tonight as well. And I'm coming from a very personal place. One of my kids is queer. They came out to us about a year and a half ago, and there was no question in our minds of them being accepted or not. But the fact that we are an accepting household and we are an inclusive household has really allowed them to express who they are and to grow into who they are and to blossom into the person that they are becoming. And that is not just a gift to them, but it's been a gift to me and to my spouse and to our entire household. And the fact that they are also accepted at school really contributes to that. It's great that they can be accepted at home, but the fact that they're accepted in their wider community as well and at the... in their wider community as well, and at their school where they spend so much of their time, really contributes to them being able to be safe and safe to express themselves and to have friends who are also forming that group and also free to express themselves as well. Some of the stats that I was gonna rattle off that we've already heard a bunch, but I think are worth repeating, is we know that when queer and trans and gay and otherwise gender non-conforming kids are not supported in their community, they're at higher risk for suicide, higher risk for drug use, higher risk for, uh, at higher risk for self-harm. Again, it's great that we can provide safety in our own home, but the fact that 4J is currently committed to that as well means that more kids are safer and more kids are able to have a safe place. So, I really urge the school board and 4J in general to continue the track that you're on and continuing to support these things and continuing to have a safe place for anyone who doesn't fit in, anyone who is gender non-conforming, gay, trans, whatever. The last thing I'm gonna say is statistically speaking, and you don't need statistics to know this, most queer kids are born to straight parents. So, if you are among the people who don't agree with me, and if you're among the people who think that 4J should not be supporting this, it is entirely possible that if you have kids, your kids are queer. One of your kids could be gay, one of your kids could be trans. Those kids hear you, they hear what you're saying, and they hear the way you're talking, and they are hiding from you now. You are missing out on the blossoming that I get to have. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker was to be online, Irene Henjum. However, Irene is not online, does she happen to be here? Okay, we'll move to the next. Angie Foster Lawson will be commenting online. Go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. Board members, my name is Angie Foster Lawson, and I use they/them pronouns. I'm a parent of a preschool-aged toddler in the 4J district. While I've only lived in Eugene for about four years, my spouse grew up here and went to 4J middle and high schools. For my toddler, the moment he enters kindergarten in a couple of years, he will be part of an LGBTQ2SA+ family, because I am queer and non-binary. It is always age-appropriate in our house to be kind and affirming and loving to one another, and that's what that means to me, and that's what I see that supportive work in elementary schools to look like for, you know, making sure students know that their families are, you know, important, just like any other family that comes to school. I'm here today to voice my support for LGBTQ2SA+ students, families, and school staff who are under a very violent microscope right now. At the last few 4J school board meetings, as some of our other speakers have said, there have been hateful anti-queer and anti-trans public comments given by community members. I just want to highlight, these are really aligned with highly-funded, right-wing efforts to remove resources and safety from queer and trans youth and adults in our schools, sports teams, bathrooms, and healthcare settings. Oregon may have some of the strongest legal and policy protections for queer and trans youth, but this does not mean that there is not harm felt every day in our schools due to hateful comments, unchecked bias, and lack of resources available to youth. Last week, I attended the 4J Pride Fest event, joined by fellow parents of youth and allies as part of the Eugene Parent Support Space Table. We gave out about 200 Pride lapel pins to caregivers and students, paid for out of our pockets, to show the love and care we have for young people and the adults who support them in our community. That Pride Fest was truly a lifeline of joy and community connection during a time of ongoing violence or even silence, which causes students to skip school again and again out of fear. It causes school administrators to field violent emails and threats, probably school board members too. It causes local queer organizations to be doxxed by national media outlets. It causes Oregon school districts to cancel planned Pride events. And so, I just want to say thank you for the district staff's support offered during the planning and execution of this wonderful event, despite out-of-town organized protests and national media coverage. I urge this board's continued visible and loud support for such events. The efforts we see to limit queer and trans students and that support is really rooted in fear and misinformation and bias that must be taken seriously by this board and the school community. Gender expansive students need all-gender bathrooms that are unlocked and accessible, that they don't have to drive home at lunch just to pee. Students need caring peers and adults who will acknowledge and interrupt racist, transphobic, and homophobic remarks every time they occur. And like others have said, these supportive actions are shown by research to increase student success, decrease bullying and suicide ideation, and promote joy in our schools. So, I thank the board for your prior actions you've taken to support LGBTQ2SA+ youth, and ask, how will this board move beyond performative policy updates and ensure that day-to-day support for young people and their queer and trans parents like me, right here in Eugene? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sean Santiani. Sean here? No Sean, so we will move to Maria G. No Maria G? How about Marian Malcolm?
Good evening, board representatives, student representatives, and Superintendent Dye. I'm the grandmother of two children in 4J. One of them at Kelly Middle School and one at North Eugene High. One of the two identifies as gay, the other identifies as non-binary. And I'm really happy to say that they both seem to feel comfortable being who they are at school. I feel that's a tribute to their teachers and maybe even more to their friend groups, among whom there seems to be an expansive and accepting attitude toward gender expression and identity. I know this isn't the way it is everywhere, not even everywhere in 4J, but I'm really glad for the increasing acceptance of difference among youth. I think adults have a harder time adapting. We look around the country, and as people have said, we see a horrifying number of anti-gay, anti-trans legislative proposals. We see our own Oregon legislature stalled because of Republican opposition to legislation that among other things would protect the rights of trans youth. We speak often nationally and close to home to remove books from libraries and to remove material addressing sexuality or gender identity or the racial history of the United States from curriculum. I suspect these progressive moves come about because many older folks find challenges to an accustomed, white male-dominated, marble society deeply unsettling. Their fear is sometimes expressed in mean and threatening ways, often on social media. Eugene is not immune from this meanness, and it can be deeply hurtful to youth whose identity is attacked, degraded, or dismissed. So, as a grandmother and as a former teacher, I have a request of school administrators and school board members, and that is to please express your commitment to putting kids first by standing strong in your support of all your students, especially those who are often subject to verbal abuse and worse. Stand strong, no matter how much pressure you may receive from within and without the community. You'll be helping kids to feel safe and respected, and you may even be saving lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Miss Malcolm. That concludes our speaker's group this evening.
So...
Thank you to everyone who took the time to share with us today.
You give time for 10 speakers, that was only six. So, we have four more speakers?
You said we... Continuing to disrupt our meeting.
I believe you're in violation...
You don't ask for one last time?
Point of order, point of order.
You don't get to do a point of order.
According to the board rules, there's nothing that says I don't. I believe you're in violation of BDDH.
You need to stop interrupting our meeting.
If not in the letter of BDDH, at least in the spirit of it.
We will take a break for a while.
By silently saying people who are trying to give a comment.
Want to reel your buddy in, man, or...
Right, BDH to limit the 10 speakers to begin with? And you have people, you have those speakers say there was a call to action, and then you have people who deliberately don't show up to limit the public comments that are available to be given. That is not democracy, that is not what the board stands for.
I'm just speaking either.
Oh yeah, sure, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
But you also not...
Two million dollars.
Here, I've not insulted anybody. This gentleman called somebody a bigot, and I would like for him to be removed for calling somebody a bigot. Yeah? Well, why don't we get a debate about it? Because you guys don't speak for 4J, so why don't we get a debate? According to BDH, I want opportunities for them, a motion for you to take up as an issue is during public comment, so if you don't give me public comment, I can't present the issue you need to take up, Andy. There's a bit on both sides, I'm sorry that you can't...
All I can say is I'm just not feeling good.
Let's see if I can edit that down right now.
Other things to talk about?
Really, it's playing in Trent's home, so you can practice.
I see. Did Kelly...
Audio, audio.
Did the semantics say things, just, she's out, what she's thinking? So Kelly was saying she thinks semantics. Okay.
Yeah, or, I mean...
Yeah. I like, I think it's...
I just... Do you want me to do the kinder... Okay, that's... Yeah, but no, thank you for letting me know.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's true. I think that's a good...
Get it done.
All right, we're back in session, thank you for your patience. I'm sorry we were disrupted. Next up on the agenda are comments by employee groups. I'm looking at you, Seth.
Good evening, Board Chair Rivasa, School Board members, Superintendent Dye, and everyone in the listening audience tonight. My name is Seth Baughlin, and I'm the president of MAPS. As most of you know by now, MAPS is our Eugene School District Employee Group that represents our 4J managers, administrators, professionals, and supervisors. Tonight, I would like to focus on the intertwined nature of beginnings and endings. This is my last month of serving as the MAPS president. Starting on July 1st, I will become the outgoing president, and Misty Jackson will become the new MAPS president. MAPS is in very capable hands with Misty coming on board, and she'll be a strong advocate for MAPS members. Going macro scale on beginnings and endings, I believe we are on the cusp of a true paradigm shift in education and in most other parts of human existence. Artificial intelligence is quickly becoming a reality, and this powerful technology is likely to be the equivalent and change to the industrial revolution or the development of agriculture. Half of all teachers are already using AI on a weekly basis. Within the next few years, AI will mean that every teacher has a digital teacher assistant, and every student will have a personalized tutor that individualizes academics for them. We will need to work thoughtfully together to use AI in ways that enhances equity and opportunity for all students. Focusing closer to home on beginnings and endings, I'd like to give a strong shout-out from MAPS to all of our seniors about to graduate, starting with IHS on Friday evening. A special shout-out to the five graduating high school seniors who applied and were selected to each receive a $1,000 MAPS scholarship for college. JJ Muniz Lopez from Echo, Katerina Escobar from Sheldon, Leslie Estrada from North, Maliki King from South, and the amazing pot of things Sumato from Trichal. One last round of beginnings and endings. MAPS wishes to give strong gratitude to our outgoing school board members. Thank you to Alicia Gordon, Kirti, and Michelle for dedicating their time and energy to the school board. And a special thank you to Alicia Hayes for her distinguished commitment over so many years to the Eugene School Board. We will miss you, Alicia, and I personally appreciate how you've always supported our special education services to our students with disabilities. Thank you to all 4J staff for your hard work this school year. It takes a tremendous amount of time and effort. We are quickly coming to the end, and that means the beginning of summer. May you all have so much deserved rest and relaxation. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, Seth. I believe that is our only person shared today.
Sabrina?
I think Sabrina's not today.
Okay.
Getting a... With that, we move on to comments and media reports by individual board members. Is there someone who would like to take it off? Kirti?
Well, the end of the year always brings many gatherings and a lot of celebrations. And just like many of you in the room, last Friday, last week Friday, I attended the Pride Festival in North Eugene High School that the GSA advisors and students and staff spearheaded and organized. It was amazing. It was amazing. All high schools and some of the middle schools were represented, as well as several community organizations. There was music, entertainment, food, many activities, and really great weather. The atmosphere was relaxed and joyful with a sense of safety and celebration. Everyone was given a colorful bag with some goodies when they entered the event. It was very welcoming that way. I really enjoyed myself and loved the rainbow manicure that I got from some students when I first entered. I've enjoyed my manicure for several days, and I'm really sort of sad that it's wearing up. Unfortunately, that protester's... It was really unfortunate that the protester threw out the main entrance. But I'm really grateful that I don't think this kept any people away, nor did it dampen the accepting and welcoming energy of the event which you felt when you were inside. Thank you for the lovely afternoon celebration of the LVGQSA+ community and diversity. And it's no coincidence that the Pride Festival was held in June because it is, as most of you know, Pride Month, which is dedicated to the celebration of LVGQSA+ culture and the commemoration of the beginning of the gay rights movement. This is something I learned in my research. The Stonewall riots started on June 28th in 1969 when New York City police raided Stonewall Inn. It was a gay club located in Greenwich Village in New York. The raid sparked a riot among bar patrons and neighborhood residents as police roughly hauled employees and patrons out of the bar. And this led to six days of protests and violent clashes in the streets with law enforcement and all around the neighborhood. The Stonewall riots served as a catalyst for the gay rights movement in the United States and around the world. Pride represents confidence, love, and joy. And we're reminded that having pride is not always easy, especially if it's a situation where people in your life or your government or your school don't support you. It is important for our school community to support and celebrate the LVGQSAII community members with pride. So thank you, everyone, for making the event possible. This, over the last two weeks, I also attended the 4J Mental Health Subcommittee. And I was updated on many initiatives, trainings, and services that are being enhanced and developed in our district, all aimed at building a system of supports for our students and staff in every building. This is called an Integrated Mental Health Approach, which focuses on all levels of mental health, from prevention through targeted interventions. The approach includes mental health education and promotion to help students develop healthy coping skills and self-care strategies, using a range of evidence-based mental health and social-emotional practices and trauma-informed practices, making mental health services and supports easily accessible to students and staff, working in partnership with parents, staff, community members, and community partners to promote and support the wellbeing of all of our students. I'm so pleased that prevention and early intervention are a huge focus of the work, as well as the creation of a continuum of supports in all of our buildings and for all of our kids. And the intention of including parents in opportunities and training and information and supports really does make... It's heartwarming to me. We need to do more of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Michelle?
I also attended the Pride Fest for the second year. I was really happy to see how we're all... I think it was twice as big this year as it was last. And it's really heartwarming to see the community come out and support this event. And we've been receiving messages through email as well as open speakers tonight. And it's really important and very much appreciated. I hope the students, staff, and attendees felt safe despite the misinformed anti-queer contingent who stood out on the sidewalk. Yeah. I...I don't understand why they needed to show up for a fun and festive gathering. I hope there are messages of disinformation and hate never prevent events like last week's from happening to promote celebration of our LVGQ to society, friends, and family. That those kind of folks will not silence any other activities promoting inclusion. I also attended the Mental Health Subcommittee meeting, and events like these that promote belonging, I think, are the best for ministry. And are what's needed to create mental wellness in our community. At the event, Eugene Public Library had a table, and I found out that they now offer library cards to all 4J and mental students. So if students or parents choose to not have access to public library collections, they can opt out. But otherwise, everybody gets a library card. This is a welcome change as many school libraries continue to be unstaffed, understaffed, and underutilized. The pilot program for three new teacher librarians at Holt, Howard, and Chavez has, in its first year, been shown to be quite successful. These positions need to be protected and expanded. Hiring librarians at every school would be another step in improving literacy and building school community. Finally, I was hoping that we would have a meeting with all of our student board representatives, but it's late in the year and folks are really busy. So I'll be sending out an email for anyone who wants to give feedback or meet with me. Your insights and details on what's happening in your schools has been invaluable. And I hope you know how impressed by you and the rest of the adult board members have been by your service, your commitment, and everything that we've learned from what you've contributed. We wouldn't be here if it weren't for y'all. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Congratulations.
Thanks, mine. First, I wanted to say that I had a chance to go visit Kelly YG, and I have a lovely picture of a bathroom classroom. I was surprised that it's actually a desk in a bathroom. I think you'd work there because of the private conditions. So excited that we're moving forward with that. Want to thank Brandon O'Reilly for my tour guide. She was an excellent tour guide. And also Tom for the popper of lunch and gave us some time to be principled. It was very informative. Her pictures with all the words I've heard from folks coming into my community. So I appreciate that. I want to also say congratulations to all the retired folks that are leaving our district and retiring. You know, this is where I put the plug in for pickleball. Just in the past, I asked, but if you, you know, go play, let me know. And also just take a second to shout out to Joy Marshall, who retired to stand for children. Joy and I certainly, at the beginning, did not always agree on things, and she always provided good insight and input and challenged assumptions, which I think is very, very important in this work. Very excited about graduation. When you get tired at the end of the year, you go to graduation, and you're like, "I can do this another year." That happened for me for sixteen and a half years. Will not happen this year. But it is what... You know, it's just kind of a culmination of the work we do. And I'm excited to see some of the students I've known since they were, you know, two or three that are graduating this year. I want to take a second and do my talk about Pride event. Sometimes, if people know me, you know, I go a little bit to the humor sometimes. So this was my comment, which is, I haven't been to a Pride event that hasn't, over my forty-plus years of going, that hasn't had people screaming and yelling outside. And I don't know what I'd do if it didn't happen. To that end, I want to thank those folks because they provided a lot of information about the event. Thank you for publicizing it. And there is nothing I have found that young people like more than to rail against authority. So I think they helped increase the number of events coming. So, great. I mean, I don't like what they said. I don't like the posters, any of that. But God, thank them for that. Come on. I'm just gonna take a second. It's one of my last meetings. And share a story, if I can do this. So those of you that know me know that I did get my degree in education. And the joke's always been, because you gotta go to the joke, that being a teacher was too difficult. And therefore, I became a manager, and managing 600 people was a lot easier than managing a classroom. That is true. I truly believe that being a teacher is very difficult. What is really part of the story is my student teaching. It happened to be my own high school. I was teaching government, and the students were supposed to do a project where they came up with a bill and then moved it through the House and the Senate, kind of to get that idea. Probably, some of you know where I grew up. Some of you probably don't want to know after this story. Anyway, so the PE, the teacher was also the girls' basketball coach. You know, I was only five years older than some of those kids, and so I knew it. My sister was that age. And then some of them were queer. And then some of them were gay. Anyway, so the bill they wanted to pass was to hunt down locked up and hang or kill, execute, homosexuals. And the teacher let that happen. And I sat there quietly as a student teacher. And I knew then, if I couldn't speak up, I shouldn't be in the classroom. So I moved on, and I spent sixteen years here trying to do best I could. And some of that is our policy on trans students. And I think the next board, who I... Well, first, I have to say, this board is incredibly supportive. And we love, and I enjoy being here in Eugene. And I enjoy being part of 4J because of boards like this and past boards. Boards that passed the transgender policy when it was first in the state. And I know the next board, and I see at least one new board member out there, will be as supportive because I made sure before I supported anybody. And just because I know them and I know their work in the community. But I do challenge us to look at that policy and see where it's lacking and see where we can do a better job. Not us, sorry. You all that are left. Look at that policy and see where we can do a better job and see where the gaps are. We have Parry come and talk to us about gaps on travel teams. And I just think we can continue to take leadership role in our state and in the country on inclusion. So I am going to end with that. Thank you all for giving me a little extra time. Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I also want to start by saying something about Pride. June is Pride Month, and I'm the proud father of a queer 4J student. I want to express my appreciation for all of the queer, trans, bisexual, gender fluid, and all other types of students and staff who show up in school every day with their whole selves. And also to those who may be working this out privately and have not yet found the safe space to share their whole selves with the world. I'm especially grateful for the students, parents, and staff who put together the Pride event hosted at Martha Eugene High School last week that Park described. We received a bunch of emails about this, most supportive, but also some declaring queerness is unnatural and should not be celebrated or even acknowledged in our schools. To be clear, it's the job of the board to ensure that all students are respected, honored, and celebrated. We have queer and trans students and staff, and students with queer and trans and gender fluid parents and family members in every grade, starting in kindergarten. Every one of those students, staff, and family members needs to be seen, heard, supported, and celebrated by the board and the school community as a whole. We will not accept any students in outside protests or in this room being told that their identity or that of their family members has to be ignored or denied. That's the breeding ground for discrimination, bigotry, and violence. I think that even the most anti-queer people who testified here would never think it's permissible to stand up at a public meeting and declare that interreligious or interracial marriages are a violation of God's will and that such kids' identities should not be acknowledged in schools. I honestly don't understand why anyone would think it's okay to say that same thing about queer or trans students. I know there were people from out of town who showed up at this district Pride event to yell at harass and attempt to shame participating students. As far as I now know, those people were from our community. To the people who did this, I would say, "You should be ashamed of yourselves." It's a free country. You can think what you want. You want to argue with or against me or any other board member, that's fine. But have the simple human decency to keep your mouths shut in the presence of these kids and to treat all of our students with respect. I also want to just touch on, as a second thing, the importance of teacher retention when we talk about reading and literacy education. There's been a lot of talk here, statewide, nationwide, about the science of reading and implementing a K-3 curriculum around that. I don't believe there's a science of reading in the sense that we think of science like simple physics experiments, like where there's one thing that works every time in the exact same way, no matter who does it. That idea is something being pushed by big banks and education technology corporations, a desire to teacher-proof education by claiming to have discovered the one right set of readings, exercises, and comments that will work every time for every student. Teaching is an inherently human relational activity that can't be standardized in a way that erases the particularity of the specific student and teacher involved in any learning relationship. There's some amount of science to almost everything. There's a science to how to pitch baseball, for instance. Probably a lot more science to how to pitch baseball than there is to how to learn reading. But this doesn't mean that teams don't have to work hard at identifying, recruiting, developing, and supporting good pitching coaches as if there's a simple formula that anyone can follow that if only they follow it with fidelity will always lead to success. And the same thing is true for teaching. No matter what curriculum we use, success will be dependent on our ability to recruit, retain, and effectively support good teachers. There's a recent story in The 74 Million, one of the national education news outlets, that reported on how important teacher retention is for making new reading curriculums succeed. They estimated that to implement a new curriculum based around the science of reading takes two years of professional development for most teachers to learn and master. When there's teacher turnover, this investment is erased, and the ability of the team of people working on this in any given school is broken up because then you have people who are in one place and people who are just starting with something new. Simply put, no curriculum can succeed where there's high teacher turnover. Every year that I have been here, we've seen respected teachers quit the district, and no one has sat down with them to ask why and to figure out what we could do differently to prevent the next person from leaving. The only way to improve teacher retention is to start by asking teachers why they're leaving and not be afraid of the answers. We need to do exit interviews, and these need to be done in partnership with the teachers' union so the teachers will feel protected to give honest feedback. For four years, many of us have been calling for this. I urge the incoming board to make this one of its first priorities. I'm looking at you, Morgan Monroe. This should be a no-brainer, and without it, we'll continue to waste time, money, and energy on initiatives that sound good on paper but can't work in practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. I don't think anyone else has joined us, so I think I'm last. Today, my statement is focused on gratitude. But first, I want to congratulate all of our 4J graduates. There are many pathways to completion, and each is as valid as the next. Each takes work and focus, and each is worthy of celebration. So I applaud you, and I cannot wait to see what you all do next. I want to echo Michelle's appreciative words for our student board reps. Your unique contributions have been informative and valuable, and I'm so thankful for the time and energy you put into the work of representing your school communities. And it's just been a joy getting to know you, sharing meals in the back room, and just having general conversations. So thank you for everything that you put into this role. I want to extend my profound gratitude to all of our retirees for the years you have poured into supporting the educational pathway of our 4J students. You have made a tremendous difference in the lives of countless students. And I say countless because collectively, I was told that you represent over one thousand, one hundred hours, sorry, years of experience. The number of students you have individually and collectively impacted is staggering. One thousand, one hundred years of experience times all those students. The impact may have come in the classroom, the meals students have eaten, the daily journey to and from school, or it may have come in caring for the spaces in which students learn from the daily custodial work, to making sure our spaces are safe and in good repair. There are so many ways in which our retirees have contributed to our collective work, guiding and lifting up our youth. Thank you. Thank you also to the staff and students who poured tremendous care and energy into organizing and hosting the Second Annual Pride Fest. In particular, I want to make sure to highlight my appreciation for those who worked diligently to ensure that our neighboring Bethel community, Bethel School District, that our neighboring Bethel community members were extended at the invitation and made welcome at Pride. This event was a resounding success, made abundantly clear by the approximately one thousand attendees who gathered in joy, dancing and being in community in celebration of affirming values in all sexuality and gender identities. Report after report from students, families, and staff members make clear this event was not only an event filled with joy and celebration, but one which cemented the fact that this opportunity to gather and celebration gave many experience to help them believe that 4J is in fact committed to its priority of working to make sure every single student belongs and is valued. Leadership is expected to set the tone of a community they lead. As such, the board is tasked with setting the tone for the district. As a board member, but also as a community member and a mother, I believe unequivocally that our Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ students and staff, along with their families, are valuable members of our community who deserve to feel safe, respected, cared for, welcomed, and to know without a single doubt that they belong in our schools and in our community. We do not want to discount or ignore the harmful impact that the rhetoric used to communicate positions that are rooted in discrimination and bigotry have on our students and staff. And I want to make clear my commitment, the district's commitment, to extending additional support for students and staff processing this harm. We do not accept that this is a question of ideology. Our Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ community members' existence is not up for debate centered in ideology. Though a small number have been particularly vocal in communicating with the board and demonstrating on the sidewalk outside of the event in protest of Pride and protest of the human beings' existence, I am extremely proud of the tremendous support our community has expressed and shown through action for 4J's Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ community members. Thank you to our community for showing up in person via email, through public comment. Our students and staff are directly impacted by these gestures, and that impact is undeniably positive. Thank you. From there, we move into the exciting world of a public hearing regarding our 2023-2024 budget. So I welcome Matt Brown up to the podium, and we can get started. It looks as though we have nobody signed up to speak, so if... Just go quick, yes.
Thank you, Board Chair, and greetings, everyone. We're going to be joined by Bob Leif, he's our Associate Director in charge of Budget and Treasury, and he's a big part of why we have such a successful budget system. Jenna is going to share the presentation to Zoom members. You're going to have the community in the presentation here. Give it for you to jump in any time if there are questions. Just going to go through a general overview of our budget, and there may be any time for any questions at the end. Next slide, please, Jenna. So just a quick overview of our budget cycle. Last two, four meetings, we discussed a variety of topics on all of our funds that the district has, anywhere from debt service to insurance reserves to our general fund and any budget regulations. Those four meetings are listed there. Tonight is our public hearing for the budgets, as well as on June 21st. We hope that the board will approve and adopt the resolution for the budget for the 2023-2024 year. This is the next slide. If you were at the last budget meeting, you saw this slide. This is a conglomerate of a few different statistics already. So the bar graphs that you see are the employment levels of the district back from 2014 to 2023. Each different color is a different classification between max, classified, and licensed. The black roller coaster line that you see is the student enrollment of the district. So you can see I marked a few important notes in time. Obviously, the COVID time period from 2020 to 2022. The forecasted students that will be coming back in next fiscal year. And our research and planning department estimated a slight bump in our forecast for enrollment and then a projected kind of downward linear line for, or forecasted enrollment over the course of the next several years. This is in line with a lot of what other districts are seeing around the students. Next slide is our general fund revenue overview. The light blue boxes are beginning fund balance, estimated at roughly about seventy-two million dollars, twenty-four percent of the fund. We have property taxes that the district receives at twenty-eight percent. And then the state school fund is our biggest revenue source. That comes in at about a hundred and nine million dollars and thirty-seven percent. And this general fund budget was built upon a nine-point-nine-billion estimate that we received from the state back in March and April when we really started bringing the budget together. Also to note, it'll come up later, just as a point of reference, for the local option. That's about twenty-three million, as estimated for next fiscal year, roughly eight percent of our general fund rate. I wanted to go over a quick explanation for those on the board members that you may already know how this works. This is a slide that I presented to our administration meeting a little while back. That is a very oversimplified explanation of the state school fund and how the district receives state school funding in relation to other school districts. So on the left side is a base scenario. We're going to say that the state school fund, the legislature has approved a million dollars. There are five districts in the state, all with each different levels of enrollment. You can see the percentages there. The legislature doles out the state school fund based on those enrollment numbers, based on the percentages you can see in that base scenario. In the middle scenario, in the middle scenario, you can see that in the proposed school two, there is a forecasted enrollment drop of about fifty percent of students, specifically just for that school, all the other schools remaining the same. This obviously changes the percentage of the total enrollments around the state. Therefore, the state school fund adjusts what each school gets. On the far right side is a scenario three, where every school drops twenty percent evenly around the state. The percentages stay the same, though, and so they have analysis. This is again a very oversimplified explanation of the state school fund and how we receive our funding. But a good point of return is, as we look at enrollment projections into the future, we do look better than other school districts. But overall, the school district enrollment in the state is generally growing. So this is our overall view of our entire budget by fund categories. As you can see, our general fund is our main fund that we operate out of. It equates to about forty-six percent of our entire budget. Second largest would be capital projects, those would be all the bond-funded projects that we have going on in the course of the next few years. And then special revenues, that are there in orange, that would be any kind of grants, mainly grants that we receive from multiple sources, federal, state, and local. Next slide is the basic overview of the entire function structure, our entire budget by function. So we use functions in our accounting structure that is predicated from the Oregon Department of Education. These functions are broken up between the structures, student services, facilities, the type of things, all the categories that you see in the pie chart on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side is just an overview of the last two years of how those expenses have started to creep. Again, another slide of the overall budget by object. So again, a portion of our fund structure accounts for how we categorize expenses into salaries, associated payroll costs, purchase services, applied materials, capital outlay, all those different categories. Good thing to note is, out of our entire budget, forty-six percent of that is equated to people. Out of the general fund, eighty-eight percent of those general fund costs are related to people. If you remember or saw the budget roadshow, you will notice that Dr. Dye and I and Bob gave presentations to say that eighty-seven cents of every dollar in our general fund goes to people. That number is now eighty-eight cents. So a couple, two important slides that we want to make everyone aware of as we go into the future of this next fiscal year and the coming years. We obviously have a local option living that is going to be coming up soon. We are looking at scenarios of what the budget looks like if the levy passes, and if it does not pass, and what those financial implications are. You also may be aware, as the community may be aware of, that we have a lot of federal funding right now, mostly in SRO dollars, as we call them. That equates to a lot of positions, a lot of funding, a lot of expenses that we normally would have. So when those funds go away in September of 2024, there is a natural kind of adjustment that we must make. And a lot of school districts do not have, in the state, do not have a fund balance like Eugene's school district does. So they are happy to make those difficult choices this next year and the year after. Fortunately, because of our balance levels and the work of previous financial directors and board members to save for those times, that is why we are able to make long-term adjustments over a course of times that tend to make quick adjustments. So this is a forecasted revenue of what those revenues and expenses look like if the levy passes, and if it doesn't. Either way, to live within our means, which is the goal, we have to make cuts over expenses generally across the entire district. So the last slide of the deck is just what's coming up next year. Obviously, we don't have a budget book in front of you. Bob and I are actually rebuilding the entire budget book right now. We would like to say that we're not going to hand out a four-hundred-and-fifty-some-page document to the community and say, here you go. So we've done a lot of research with other school districts, as well as the Oregon Department of Education, to figure out what's actually required to be in the document, what the community wants to see in the document, what explanations do we need as community members to help understand how our budget works. So Bob and I are building that right now, we anticipate that to be done in July, and will be released to the public and to all the members at that time. We also have a new organizational structure that you're aware of, as well as a new financial structure. The goal over the next year, two, three, four years is to simplify. We've taken a lot of time to overcome our financial policies and processes and procedures. So we're taking a step back and kind of starting from the beginning to build that foundation. Any questions?
I know the state, a couple, three weeks ago or so, had a new revenue forecast that produced two billion dollars more from the outcome of BNI. Is that reflected in here?
That isn't, sorry, that is not reflected in the current budget document. So we built our budget off the nine-point-nine-billion dollars. What you're referring to is the ten-point-two that was just recently approved. This dollar actually equates to about four million dollars in additional funds for the school district by the time you work through the state school fund and enrollments and everything. So those, that four million dollars is not pictured in the current budget resolution that you may be approving next meeting. Excellent. Any questions for Bob?
Well, I think the fact that we don't have questions shows us what we've been given to us during our budget committee meetings has been particularly helpful. And I just want to reiterate what I said in our last one, which was, gratitude for how consistently you heard our questions and brought back the information that we were asking for. That was very helpful.
My pleasure.
Oh, Alicia's going to ask a question for Bob.
Sure, it's a question, it's time to quick. Dr. Johnson, you took down the pictures. But it looked like you had said, this is one where we may have a problem with revenue. Want to necessarily call that out and say, everybody should be in derbis at this time. Because we know that's a definite change. And she's, you know, just kind of reminding the new board coming on that you can work to not make that such a big cliff. And I know that you do work with this, and I'm sure you will. We just really encourage that to happen because it's hard to come back from a pingslip, even if you stayed with, you don't get laid off, it's, it's hard. So we don't want that to happen to our staff. So I'm just hoping everybody can kind of look ahead at a few years and deal with what they need to deal with now to help with that, like that. Thanks.
Again, it's nice for the district to have such a healthy fund balance that it allows you to take the time to make meaningful decisions.
Well, I know part of that is SRO, but part of it's not a spending fund. But part of it was a conscious choice of passports to get off that roller coaster ride of laying staff off for a limited days or, you know, what. We can negotiate small, bigger classrooms, class size. Not appreciating, I just, I think we do have a chance, and I hope everyone takes that opportunity. Thanks.
There's no further questions, thank you. Next, oh. Next up on the agenda are items for information, and we will start with a presentation from the 4J Student Climate Justice Team. You all have the floor.
Hi, thank you so much for having us today. We're the 4J Climate Justice Team, a group of students from high schools across the district. Our primary focus is on climate action throughout 4J. We focus on empowering and educating students on how they can mitigate the climate crisis, not only in their everyday lives, but in the communities they're a part of. We also want to point out that this group was formed in 2020 because students across the district wanted to create a group with the mission of educating fellow students across our district on climate-related subjects. Because the talk of climate change was very inconsistent throughout schools at this time. Since then, we have made some progress, but climate education is still at the core of our beliefs, and we still have a long ways to go. I'm Ladi, and I'm a senior at Churchill High School.
I'm Gabriel, I'm a sophomore at Churchill High School.
I'm Bella, and I'm a junior at Sheldon High School.
I'm Mila, and I'm a junior at South Eugene High School.
I'm Nora, and I'm a junior at South Eugene High School.
And I'm Lily, and I'm a freshman at South Eugene High School.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Oh, next slide, please, sorry. Thank you. Listed here are some of our past achievements we have collaborated on as a group, including our district-wide clothing swap, which promoted alternatives to fast fashion, working with legislators on a climate education bill, creating informative lessons, an example being our alternative transportation lesson. Last year, presenting at City Club of Eugene on the subject of climate education.
Last year, presenting at City Club of Eugene on the subject of climate education and youth perspective of the climate crisis, and presenting to ODE's science specialists and the council state science supervisors. While achieving all of these, we have also worked as a support system for green clubs across the district. In the following slides, we touch on some of them.
Next slide, please.
At Churchill, we have the Climate Action Club, going once a week. We have done things around the school to attempt to improve sustainability. We have continued our composting program, as well as volunteer at Mount Pisgah to help clear paths and plant trees. We worked with different clubs at our school for Earth Week. For example, in collaboration with LSU, BSU, and PISU, we presented a PowerPoint presentation on environmental racism. With the Youth Action Council, we made posters and discussed climate anxiety. We cleaned out the school planters, removing trash and dust and putting dead leaves from plants. And we as a club are working with our school's administration to get reusable into school lunches and our single-use items into school lunches.
Next slide.
Sheldon's main goal this year has been establishing a, a school garden. And I'm happy to say that we are already cultivating our crops, which have been spinach and turnips. The hands-on aspect of the project has brought members to the club that may not otherwise have joined a, an environmental organization, which was really rewarding to see. We are currently working on establishing a connection with our school's food pantry, which provides food for students who are food insecure. Most of, most of the items in the pantry are packaged, and offering students fresh produce would be a huge advancement. We're also working on attending soil and creating a native plant garden in the hopes of helping build habitat for native birds and pollinators. Apart from the garden, we also have dune trail maintenance at Mount Tom House and work to paint environments with paint and mural. Next slide, please.
At South, our goal as a club is to connect students to climate action opportunities in the community and to encourage students to make sustainable change. Since we're a decently large club, we usually have multiple projects running at once. Here are some examples. We've been regularly volunteering with friends of Beaufort Park at the Mount Pisgah Native Plant Nursery. We've been writing written and oral testimonies to support legislation for. We're working on painting a mural in our school to bring awareness to climate change. We've maintained a composting system with the Love Food Non-Waste Program. We've had multiple guest speakers present to our club, and we invited a National Geographic's geotopologist to present her work to our school. We've made multiple posters to inform students about climate issues and climate actions that they can take. And finally, for Earth Week, we collaborated with other school clubs to bring awareness of climate change. Next slide.
North Eugene's E-Heal Club has done a variety of community service projects, both in the city of Eugene as well as throughout the school. Working with Grassroots Gardens, students helped to grow local organic food for families in need around the city through Food for Lake County. They also planted trees with Friends of Trees throughout neighborhoods that are in need of shade of true climate justice action. Year-round, students are on school-wide bottle and can recycling, as well as other waste reduction efforts alongside the community partners around North Eugene. Next slide.
So to start off, we would like to acknowledge all of the achievements the 4J Climate Justice Team has accomplished, both this year and in the past. Every step has been towards a more hopeful and sustainable future. But we've also come to a point where we want to make an even bigger impact in our district and our community. One of our future goals is to meet more regularly with the school board, ideally once a month. By meeting with the board, we hope to bring student voices to district leadership, while also, and also to the foregrounds of district action. This would not only provide students with the ability to share ideas, but also to ask questions and create open discussion about issues surrounding climate action. We believe that these actions would help 4J achieve its climate goals. By representing student interests in sustainable action, they would help the district create an equitable and sustainable future for its students. We also would like to note that we would not be the first district in Oregon to do this. Currently, Bend has a Youth Action Council working on issues, issues similar to this. And in Portland, a group is being formed as we speak. We hope the board will consider this request. In addition, we wanted to mention that the 4J Climate Justice Team is beginning a partnership with Our Future, a group centered in climate action that has youth, youth representation from all over Oregon. With contacts throughout the state, we are able to make a difference, not only in Eugene and within our district, but also beyond it. Thank you.
Next slide, please.
As Paul Hawkins once said, we need to regenerate within one generation, meaning we're all in this together. We as youth can only do so much, and it is vital to the process that we have supportive adults willing to put in the same efforts. It can't just be all on us, the youth, because we all live on the same planet together. Next slide. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. We would like to acknowledge all the work this school board has been doing in efforts to combat climate change, and we look forward to meeting the upcoming board next fall. As a senior, I sadly will not be a part of the group anymore, but I'm excited about the actual change that happens after I'm gone. I know our goal is to, is to help achieve your goals. Thank you.
Thank you. We might have a couple of minutes for questions, if you have any.
We can definitely take some time for those if you're ready for them. I have, I have a few myself, but I'll open them to the people. Anybody else wants to go first? Judy?
So obviously, so it sounds like every high school has a good-sized group. Do you then meet across, are there representatives that meet across the district, then from the high schools and coordinate some?
Yeah, so we try and have at least one representative from each high school that's a part of the Green Team there so that we, sorry, we meet once a month with those people, or once a week with those people, so that we can have a space where we can jump ideas off of each other and just have a space where everyone feels supported.
Thank you. Thank you all for your leadership, and it's really phenomenal what you're doing. I really, really appreciate it. And I'm taking away the term climate anxiety. I definitely feel that every day, so it's good to take some action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Could you guys all step forward like two steps? You've not been in the camera, so everybody listening has this disembodied and can't really see you. And I don't know, your parents might want to see you and friends. It's still pretty hard. Now you guys kind of see where you are. Make sure, thank you.
I, um, I have a couple of questions. First, I want to just say how much I had a joyful moment seeing that compost is here. I think that's very special and I think it's, it shows that when, when you, you, you find a way to stage each other in ways that I wouldn't be able to. So I love that, that would be helpful. I am curious for the Sheldon, I think there's one Sheldon rep up there? So I'm looking on the spot. Do you know if the produce coming out of the garden, you said something about students being able to access it? Is it going into the kitchen or are you offering it to the community? What's happening with your terms?
Um, so, so far as I believe that we are, um, hopefully either storing it in our food pantry that we have at school or putting it in our school cafeteria.
Okay, great. Awesome, I appreciate that. And then, um, South Eugene High School, I think there's a couple of these, like whoever wants to choose this one. You mentioned, um, Earth Week and collaborating with other student groups? And I'm just curious what that collaboration looked like? Did they help you push out information or how did that take form?
We had other club members, clubs, other school clubs, talk about climate change and how it affects aspects of their clubs.
Okay.
Clubs as well as having school-wide theme days and activities.
Awesome, thank you. And then my last question is for anyone to answer. All right, let's put the senior on the spot since she won't be able to answer them next year. So I'm curious if you have reached out to expand this group to our two high school charter schools? So I know that two, twin, two rivers, two rivers, well, two rivers. Two rivers. You know, it's the program that has a very, you know, outdoor focus. And then that charter school has a lot of that going on as well. And I just didn't know if that was something that you've considered yet? And if you hadn't, I, I guess this is less of a question if you haven't, but I encourage you to do, to consider it. So I don't know if it's something that you've thought of already.
Yeah, so I believe that in the past, we have reached out to them. But it's something, you know, each year, it's kind of hard with student schedules and it is quite a bit of a time commitment at times. And so I know that every year, we try and reach out to as many schools, specifically high schools within the district, including the alternative ones. But it's definitely something that we're going to want to do again next year. And every, all of them are invited. Everyone's welcome.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you.
So I just want to add to that. I'm going to channel my board buddy, who's a student rep from, Brent, Washington, from Eugene Online Academy. If you do reach out, I think what she looked from her survey, there's a lot of students that might also be interested in participating in something like this. So don't forget them.
Thank you. That was my, my longer-listed question. So I'm, I'm good and really appreciate you guys coming. Look forward to hearing from you and, and working in a way, working with you all to find a way where we can have some communication back with board. I think you're aiming for monthly. I'm sure we can find a way where, even if it's designated a rep from the board, there's, there's ways for us to make sure that that happens. Does anybody else have any questions? You guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you so much for your time.
And yeah, thank you very much, yeah. I realized that I was quickly excited to hear from you all and I jumped ahead in the agenda and we skipped the consent group because I heard students were coming and it's just, that's my favorite part. So we're going to go back one step and look at our consent agenda. There's nine items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion? Gordon?
I will read off the consent agenda.
Is there a second, Alicia? Gordon Mayford missed to adopt the consent agenda and that motion is seconded by Alicia Hayes. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those give favor of adopting the consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Has to be unanimously with five ayes from Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Maya Bosa, Gordon Mayford, and Michelle Shu. Thank you. Now we can jump back into items for information. The next item for information is a discussion, a discussion around community benefit agreements for new construction. Gordon, if you're listed as the presenter, pass it to you. Is Kyle on, is Kyle on the screen? Okay. So we can get started and then you'll have to react.
Um, well, I guess this is, I'm sorry, where should I be looking? Anywhere.
Because I'm still on.
When we, um, when we did the community benefits agreement that just covered campus bridge, because it was the one school left on our, that hadn't gotten out of bid yet. And we talked about doing this as a, and then evaluating how it goes. All of the discussion I remember was the question was, would there be enough bidders? In other words, what we're concerned about is this something that might either increase the cost or slow down the timetable of construction. The concern was that if the community benefits, if basically by requiring full family medical insurance for all construction workers, that would limit the number of, of contractors who would bid and therefore we'd end up with something higher than we otherwise would get for not enough bidders. And so, I mean, I know that the project is not done. We can't say exactly what day it's going to be done or exactly how much it's going to be cost. But I guess my two questions are, is my, is it true that, it's my understanding that we did have enough bidders and that there was nothing so far that we think slowed down bidding or resulted in a higher bid than we otherwise would have gotten? And are these contractors that have done the work either for us or other school districts before, like is there any reason to believe that these contractors are any worse than any other contractor that we would be suspicious about problems in timing or costs? Thanks. That's either from the super pattern or he is designated. Kyle, I believe you have more direct information in response to those questions.
Yeah, sure, Randy. Good evening, board. Gordon, to your couple of questions, the first around the timeline. The timeline at this point, we are still on time and on schedule for CAMUS, anticipating to open in the fall of '24. As, as a result, in your question around the number of bids, we did receive bids in all of the trade areas in which are under the CBA agreement. There was one trade in which did not meet the three-bid minimum based on the CBA, which allowed us to make an adjustment if needed, and we did do that to perform that. Out of those seven trades that were in the CBA, the majority of those bids were local, local contractors, not all of them. And when I mean local, I mean I'm referring to the Eugene Springfield area. Technically, you could consider Salem in that area extended local. But I'm, when I say local, I'm just referring to the Eugene area extended around, not, not too far out. And so, yes, we did receive bids in the areas of those trades to be able to move the work forward, with the exception, as I said, when we received electrical bids, we just didn't receive the three-bid minimum and we made an adjustment to move ahead.
Judy, do you have a question?
Yeah, were we going to ask? So my recollection was for the pilot, that was not the only question we had, was whether we got enough bids. And you already addressed one of them, Kyle, was if they were local or not. We also wanted to look about if there's any way to determine what kind of, if there were other costs to the district related to doing bids this way. And I think that was the, the only other question that we were asking. And then I think we, there were a couple other programs. We were going to see some state-level group was going to be writing regulations about, I mean, input about how to do community benefits agreements. I think it was ODOT that's doing a pilot. Anyhow, I wonder if you have any information about costs or time, or timelines or anything related to the bids back.
Judy, you're correct. I mean, based on the fact that this is a pilot and construction is about fifty percent complete at this point, we are not in the gathering data mode at this point, understanding that we didn't have any ability to have any sort of a, kind of a pre-meeting or, or get a context. And because we're only fifty percent of the way through the project, it would be difficult to provide that kind of information. We need the project to be completed. Once that's completed, then we can go through and do the data analysis work to be able to bring forward the kind of information. You know, I, my understanding is, you're right, is ODOT is in that, that pilot phase as well. I can't speak to that because I'm unaware of, of how it's going or what they're exactly doing with it. And I, at the time, back in December of '21, when the board passed the resolution to move forward with the pilot on CAMUS, at that point in time, we were the only district in the state to be able to do that. So to answer your question, it's some of that data gathering component piece is we're only halfway through a pilot and we're just not having the ability to be able to provide some of that information until the pilot's complete.
Gordon?
One, one question and one just piece of information, a piece of information is, and I'm not sure where ODOT is in, but there's a long history of lots of community benefits agreements and project paper agreements in Oregon, not in the school system, but in lots of places in the public and private sector. And there's plenty of data on. And there's plenty of data on, on that outside of us. But I did wanna follow up on what I thought Judy was asking, which is whether, um, there have been any increased, um, administrative costs. In other words, not the cost to the district, but the cost to your board or anything else within the, um, within the 4G district to doing it this way as opposed to how we otherwise would do it.
Well, yeah, I think the answer to the question is, is yes, there, there is an increased cost. What, what we have not done is gone through and calculated all of the, the labor hours and the time that was put into the, kind of all of the pre-work at the time back in 2021, um, when we were going through this process to kind of have that conversation with the board, get the parameters of what the board wanted, working with our legal counsel, working with other folks, working with both you and Judy. What we didn't do is, is we didn't go through and, and look back and compile all of the hours for Ryan and myself and Carol and Christine and, uh, including you and Judy. So, um, yes, there, there was an administrative cost to it, but it, it was an internal cost that we didn't necessarily track at that part.
And, and sorry, just to follow up, it was, it was the cost of creating the program as opposed to like, once we create, once we did all that work with, um, with your department and with legal, just say, right, here's how it's gonna work. Then what there's not more, there's not ongoing administrative costs that are higher here than, than everybody would do contracting.
Yeah, I think, I, I think what'll happen, uh, Gordon, is, is yes, the, the majority of that time and labor was on the front end in putting the program together. As the project continues to roll forward and as we do it, we, we continue to operate as we have with the majority of our construction projects. There will be some administrative costs on our end as the pilot program comes to an end. Because at that point in time, we will have to do some engagement work with a general contractor in making sure that we're communicating the necessary, um, data points that we need to bring back and calculate any of that information. What I don't know is exactly how much time that will take at that point, but there, there will be some administrative costs at the end. And it is something that as we get close to the end, we will track that, that part of it. Um, and we just didn't track the front end of it because we were in the middle of that process back in 21.
Thank you.
Judy?
That's, thank you for bringing that, Gordon. That wasn't my, my question was more related to the actual work, but that's a good question to answer. I just wanted to clarify, so.
Are there any other questions? Well, then thank you, Kyle, for being available to answer our questions and give us an update on where we are so far. Really appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
The next item for information is, uh, an update from Judy on the legislative committee.
Well, there's not a whole lot to say because I think everyone's been reading the news, that there's not a whole lot going on. So I think there is, there are many legislators who are very frustrated, disappointed because basically any bill that didn't make it through before the, um, the walkout is, is actually virtually dead. Because if in fact the senators who did walk out and representatives, um, come back, they only are talking about coming back for one day and that's to pass as many of the budget bills as they can. But, um, the, the general sentiment is that they wouldn't even have enough time in a day because of the requirements for reads to pass all of them. I feel like probably the state school fund might be one of the first that they passed, but, um, the legislature did pass a continuing resolution, which means business will go on until September and we would get funded at the level we were funded last year, which I think was 9.3 billion statewide. So we'd get less in the beginning. The talk though, in the agreement is, as, um, Matt Brown's shared 10.2 billion for the state school fund. So I'm feeling hopeful because there'll be a special session called this summer by the governor to, to finish the work. But a lot of the substantive bills will not go through. Um, and there will be a, you know, they're now charging, as you know, a fine for Senator, people who are, have walked out and not coming back. And there'll be a challenge to, um, to the, the required, the constitutional change that, uh, you wouldn't be eligible for reelection if you were an elected official and were up for more than 10 unexcused days. There's a challenge on the, on the language around the word what's a term, but we'll see how that plays out. So it'll be, oh, and so the, the only work that's happening is what goes into the Christmas tree bill. And someone said, really? They call it the Christmas tree bill? I'm so used to hearing that. It is true. So at the very end of the sen, uh, session, the very last bill they passed that they're getting ready is things that have been left out. And there's a lot of negotiations with leadership to put into a Christmas tree bill. So for example, there was a glitch with the early intervention, early childhood special aid budget. It will probably get fixed in the Christmas tree bill as well as many, many other things. So, you know, it's crazy. It's like a wish list.
Does anybody have any questions for Judy?
No, but I got some things I want in that wish list. And in my way, I want to make the wish.
Okay, well then we move on to, uh, items for action. We have four items for action tonight. The first one is, uh, to consider approval of the board calendar for the 2023, 2024 school year. As you all recall, Superintendent Dai proposed that we shift our meeting schedules so the first meeting of the month is a regular board meeting and the second would be a work or executive session. The other thing that I need you to consider, it's not on here, but I'd like all of you to note, invite all of you, I'm really looking at you Judy because the rest of you will have to worry about this off of your other lives. But, um, I'd like you, added to this calendar should be the dates for the summer retreat, which will be scheduled for August 1st, Tuesday, August 1st from 5 to 9, and Thursday, August 4th from 5 to 9. In between, wait, August 3rd. Yes, thank you. August 3rd from 5 to 9 gives us a board meeting in between the 2 on Wednesday, August 2nd. In, in looking at these dates, Superintendent Dai and I were recognizing that while we are back in session in August, that's still a month where people are trying to pull a little bit of family time in before the kids are back in session, teachers are back in session, staff. And so we didn't want to eat up a bunch of the weeks of the month. We have, um, this, this summer, instead of the OSBA conference happening in July, it's happening August 11th to the 13th. So that makes for a jam packed week for us to do the, the first, second, and third, but it, um, would give us the ability to have some, some chunks of time where we can, um, devote to, to stuff that is, uh, not exclusively, not making August exclusively board worrying to, um, scheduling plans. So that's the logic behind the first and the third. We were thinking after work hours, so hopefully people can be there by 5:00. So I, I, I believe somebody should make a motion and then we can have a discussion. So, Alicia, you look like you're ready to make a motion.
I'll make the motion and give you a guess. So I would move that you accept the dates that have been put forward with the addition of the, uh, retreat that you put in there.
August 1st and August 3rd from 5 to 9.
August 1st and August 3rd from 5 to 9. I would.
And second. Okay, just maybe, maybe we can start at that motion?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest you not, uh, that's just the dates. How about we just go with the dates?
I think that's a very good idea. Okay. Is there a second? Judy? Okay, so Alicia Hayes moves for us to accept the dates proposed with the addition of the first and the third from 5 to 9 for our summer retreat. And seconded by Judy Newman. Is there any discussion around accepting the dates proposed with that addition? Gordon?
Just to clarify, this is dates without saying what's a general meeting or what's, okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions or discussion? Oh, wow. Okay. In that case, all those in favor of accepting the dates proposed with the addition of the first and the third from 5 to 9 for a retreat, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously with ayes from Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Maya Bassa, Gordon Leibert, and Michelle Shu. Now we still have the question of, um, what those dates look like in terms of, um, whether we continue with the model that we have in place now or we, um, consider the proposal of switching to a monthly meeting and a monthly work for executive session. Alicia?
I don't have a motion unless you let me make one, but I would suggest, given you have a lot of new board members, that you look at this your first meeting and then we as a board don't decide on that. Let them forward. So I would move that forward. Just my thoughts.
Okay, I, I wanna talk about it, but I'm hoping that maybe somebody can make a motion so then we can talk about it and then make a decision. Because it differently is a better decision there, right? I'm not encouraging you to make that entire motion.
You would encourage me to make that entire?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I move that you, um, I don't know where you're tabling it. I move that you postpone till the first, uh, meeting of the new school board, the discussion about regular board meetings and work sessions, executive sessions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Alicia Hayes moves that we, um, postpone the decision as to the, um, what will occur on the dates that have been approved, whether it's a regular board meeting or an executive session until the August 2nd board meeting with the new board. Seconded by Judy Newman. Is there any discussion? Gordon?
Uh, I would support that mostly, obviously, because I'm not gonna be here. I think the new board should decide for themselves. But I would, I, my, my only two concerns that I would show for them, one is that, um, if we only have one general meeting a month, it means we only have one time for public comment a month, which is an issue. And the other is I just wonder if it's a little too, if maybe the business report is a little too, um, I, you know, the good word is fluid, the bad word is unpredictable to, to lay out such a determined schedule and that, um, it just seems like it might work better to have contention, but then really play things on the board. But anyway, but I support leading to the next board.
Judy?
That was exactly my wondering was limiting board, uh, public comment. So whenever we decide and wanna be conscious of that, whether we have longer public comment periods on our, if we do decide to have, you know, a business meeting, um, or we have listening sessions of, you know, scheduled listening sessions where more people could testify on different topics. But I do, I would prefer not to limit public comment. We have a lot of people who wanna comment, so.
Does anybody else have input? Michelle?
Yeah, it, it just feels like a big change, um, with lots of new board members coming on. And not quite being able to anticipate what it will look like, in addition to decreasing.
So anybody else, I'll put myself in the queue, but I'll let anybody else go before me. So I guess I'll go then, um. And I'm trying to speak to the motion specifically, not to the format. But I, um, I appreciate that we've set the dates. I, um, so that, that, that is set. We all know that the expectation for us is to be present on all those days as, as well as we can. I, I do think that it feels very welcoming to pass this off to the next board and I appreciate that, having been a fairly new board member. I also, uh, appreciate the perspective of the current board members in terms of their experience with the current model. And, um, so that makes me also hesitant to just jump into the new space without getting input. I don't know if this has been ever done in 4G. And if it has, I would love to hear from board members who have been around when that was the, the model. So that's part of why I feel as though it might be worth it for us to, you know, make the bullets and decide and make a decision ourselves. Susan and Maya. Judy?
I think you make a good point, Maya, but I think we could ask for that input and it would be on record that could be brought forward to the new board too. I mean, it doesn't mean that it has to be through a vote, would be my thought. And I've never experienced a schedule, so I don't have anything to add. Uh, I just know we have a lot of things to deal with and our board meetings are each into every two weeks, so.
Right, I, and, and I worry that that's getting into a different discussion on the merits of the two models, which I think is worthwhile discussion, but we're, our motion is about postponing the discussion, right? Does anybody else have something to add? Okay, Gordon?
Lots of labor things. If we postpone the, stop, there's two movies, but if we postpone the discussion, are we basically saying unless the new board decides to do something else, then we continue with things the way they are? Like there would, there would have to be an affirmative decision to move to something new and otherwise we continue the way it's been for a long time.
So is that essentially a friendly, non-intolérations motion?
Friendly clarification.
Okay, so then that would mean that, that barring the new board opting for the new model, we would be sticking with the current model?
I would say, yeah. I would say the new board could come up with, hey, we wanna meet Tuesday and Thursday. It's up to them, but, um.
Never voted on it.
But in terms of what's in front of us, it really does say to you, I believe, Maya, which is, you can keep it the same, you can change it, you can change it to something else. I don't think they're gonna be ready to make that decision, personally. I wouldn't be ready to make that decision my first meeting, but it gets it on that agenda and maybe you postpone it even the first meeting we talk about. That's just my good sense, but.
Is there any other input on whether we postpone this until August 2nd?
And I realize it's, it's not my decision and I'll vote, but I do look forward to a conversation about, um, how we might incorporate more frequent or how we might incorporate, um, listening sessions or the ability for the public to speak at a longer duration and on specific topics. And even if not this, um, I, I don't know that exactly what the schedule is, is the issue solved, but how do we engage the community on, um, topics that we specifically have interest in and create opportunities for them to talk to us about things that we don't regulate? So I look forward to the conversation.
Is there any other input regarding the motion postponed? Okay, now all those in favor of postponing the meeting so the new board can make the decision on August 2nd, uh, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Passed unanimously with ayes from Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Maya Bassa, Gordon Leibert, and Michelle Shu. So just to summarize, um, the two motions, we have these dates officially on the books, all of the dates listed here, typically the first and the third Wednesday of the Typically the first and the third Wednesday of the month. Barring a few months, Wednesday, October shifts because of Yom Kippur, January and April shift because of Boonchan spring break, so there's, and then in December, there's also a shift because of the start of the trip. But, and these dates are to include the first and the third of August from five to nine for our retreat. The second component of our decision was to postpone what our model is going to be for meeting for the new board to decide in the August 2nd meeting. All right, thank you, everyone. The next item for action is the board self-evaluation. Jenna has some, has an idea to share with us that we need to approve so that we can jump into a self-evaluation before our next meeting. Jenna?
Thank you, Teresa. Given my turn kind of receiving, I'm not present, but I was asked at the last meeting to identify a way in which the board could make their self-evaluation full and take a moment to reflect upon their work from the last year. And taking a fifth calendar and the multiple things that are before you, I have prepared and pulled from the OSBA for self-evaluation, a set of questions that I'm happy to put into a survey monkey type format so that you can individually rank each of the questions based on the standards, by standards of success levels through the OSBA. But in thinking more creatively and truly looking, as has been mentioned several times tonight, at the change that is about to be before you and what might be most useful to the board and the future board in reflecting on the past year and then creating actionable items moving forward, staff is going to propose an alternative. We have been utilizing a tool throughout the year that is called Thought Exchange. It is an online program which asks a much more broad engaging question. So rather than just rank one through five or always sometimes never feedback, it provides board members an open-ended question and you have then the opportunity to reflect on it. You can come back to it more than once and you can put in as many different thoughts, as it's called, as you see fit or you think might be helpful. The benefit of this tool is it's actually an engagement tool, so you would be interacting with your colleagues' thoughts, so the things that they had submitted, feedback or ideas, and you can rank your alignment with that statement for that message. The program will then help provide some themes, it'll help provide some topic areas, and it may help guide a little bit of the reflection at your next meeting and then also provide a foundation for the new board to have an opportunity to really hear from you and me, both ways, in your own words, rather than, again, a one through five scale. So the first question before you tonight would be if that is something the board is interested in. And then staff has a proposal for two open-ended questions that I'd like to feedback on so that I can make sure that they are prepared and can launch them. It would give you, the recommendation would be that it would be open through the 15th of June. That would give you a little over a week to answer, return back to it, reflect, answer again. And that would give the staff time to make sure that the information is prepared for your next meeting.
I would love to know what the two questions are. I think that might help us to decide if this feels like it will cover the breadth of what we might want. And I just want one clarification. I've done the Thought Exchange in the past, we have a parent, and I just want to make sure that it's always that, the way that I envision it being in the sense that if I give feedback, it doesn't say Maya Rasa says. So we're giving feedback and reacting to feedback, but not based on any sort of attachment to personalities or whatnot, it's just the concept and it stands by itself.
Absolutely, so thank you for that clarifying question. It is dependent upon how we set it up. We are setting it up unanimously generally. The other component is we can set it up so that if each time we give meaning, we log in, yet it doesn't track your individual thoughts. So it wouldn't tie it to a specific board member, a specific response to a specific board member, but there would be a degree of
I just ask if it was legal.
It is all public, so it wouldn't be something that, yes, we would post it and make a difference.
Yes, but we're a public body, we are a business in public, we can't even vote anonymously. So I'm just questioning that.
I'm happy to look into that to make sure, but because it's not a deliberational decision, I don't believe like you're not awarding a contract, you're not making district business decisions. I believe it's a tool that a lot of different districts considered OSBA has used in the past.
We can look into that aspect of the topic, absolutely.
And if it isn't legal, then it would be obvious that we got the legal rap. Judy?
Yeah, I saw this on the agenda, I knew we were going to talk about it, but I have to ask the question, why are we doing it when we have two meetings left this year? And because usually a self-evaluation is about what you're going to work on in the future. So I'm going, I don't, I mean, understanding what we're going to use it for and why we're even doing it would be helpful if we really want to go forward with it, period. And secondly, which format, what information we want, so. Anyone have any insight on that?
Happy to staff just prepare options based upon the request and the desire from the board to do a self-evaluation. But I think your question is exactly what led me to recommend the Thought Exchange activity that may be more useful for, it's not specific. So for example, if you might go ahead and get sort of the recommended question. One of them is much more standard than you would think of. And it says, what do we as a school board think we are doing well? And what areas can we focus on in order to improve? It's a very broad and open question that then provide you the opportunity to reflect on last year, but be more, you can give examples of things that worked well, and then the system will help bring that and help theme it. So communication, for example, or advocacy, based on your examples of things that went well or things that were not as smooth as you would hope. And then that would provide information for discussion for the next incoming board. The area that worked really well was our advocacy. And so we know that the systems that we have in place in order to do that would be something that they would not necessarily need to immediately focus upon, that kind of thing. I think if the board made the decision that they did want to go ahead and move forward with the self-evaluation, that's all we're doing is presenting and responding to that. I'm sorry, and the second question that we were proposing after reflecting was perhaps one that's a little bit more targeted around what is getting in the way of our success.
Thank you, Jenna. I have to answer the question of why we don't do it this late. I think just to piggyback onto that, I'm looking, I don't quite do it quickly enough, but I know that we are required by policy to have an annual self-evaluation. And we didn't do it last year, and if we don't do it this year, that puts us two years out of compliance of that policy. And I think that there is still, you know, there's four board members who are living along, but there is still three of us who, far as we all know, will be here. So even if it's, I mean, I would engage in it even as an individual for myself, just because I think the exercise in reflecting on the experience over the last year, really the last two years in some ways can only serve to help us as a body, but at least also to help me as an individual to think deeply about what I want to continue doing, what I'd like to make a shift in, where I'd like to personally grow, you know, it helps with things like what sessions to attend at OSBA. So I, I think that, A, we want to be in compliance and set that pattern back up. And I think an important thing that we include in that is this should be done only in March, maybe. You made a good point. So I suppose somebody should probably make a motion, and it should be something along the lines of using the Thought Exchange or else using the standard survey monkey. Judy?
I just have one, I just want to make one other comment. I don't know that, I would need to be anonymous doing it. I'd like to hear what my fellow board member's thoughts were, so I don't, we don't have to get into the area, would it be legal or not? I'm just expressing, you know, I think it would be good to get people's perceptions, especially what to frame the questions we're going to ask, so.
So do you want to make a motion to do it and include that in the motion? So then Jenna has the format ready to go?
I move that we do a self-evaluation that has two open-ended questions that we respond to as board members. And the format, and just going to leave up to our staff.
So the Thought Exchange?
Could be Thought Exchange, yeah.
Finally, we go. Is there a second? Michelle? So Judy moves that we use these two open-ended questions to do a self-evaluation using the Thought Exchange platform as recommended by the staff with board grouper identities attached to the feedback. Did I get that right, Judy? And Michelle Shu seconds it. Is there any, I know we did a little clarification discussion, is there any discussion about the actual motion from where we moved on or differently? Wonderful, all those in favor, oh, and by doing it by June 15th, right? All those in favor of the motion to use the open-ended Thought Exchange process to do a self-evaluation with names attached? Raise your hand and say aye. 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 We have another unanimous approval of the motion with ayes from Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Maya Rasa, Gordon Leibert, and Michelle Shu. Thank you so much, Jen, that was really helpful. Oh, thank you. For the record, Kirthy Hasidra Kaufman has joined us in the meeting. Welcome, Kirthy. The next item on the agenda is the, is an action item, which is the proposed board policy IIIAA. Request for reconsideration of curriculum instructional and library materials. Rod is here to answer any questions. I'm not sure if Rod has something else to share with us, I know this is our second green.
I did want to just, there's some confusion in the packet, there's an extra form in there that didn't even be in there, so I just wanted to walk through that. I know last time when we talked about this, it was, I'm going to try again and see if I can do better, so. So in the packet there, you see that there's the summary of where we began this journey. One pager. And then the next item in there, it says, this is the item that doesn't belong in the packet. It's actually the exact same as something else that's in there, so it's just something that was from a previous, just got added, not necessary. Now, what we're really here to decide, or we are here to decide is two things. There's two versions. On page 112, there's version two, which is what was, first, the request was, can we have a skinny version of a policy with not all the details on the procedure? And then version one, which was the original request, can we make what used to be an AR, what currently is an AR, into a policy? So those are the two, that's the decision.
Okay, thank you. Does somebody want to make a motion? Gordon?
I will go through and adopt version one.
Is there a second? Judy? Gordon goes to adopt version one, and Judy seconded that motion. Is there any discussion or questions? Judy?
I think I'm, I just want to clarify, I know what I'm voting on. Proposed version one was the original, we saw that mirrors that's identical to the AR, correct?
Yes.
And so then the AR goes away?
Right, because we down our policy.
And version two is the skinny version, and if we don't pass one and pass two, that would continue with the AR?
We would, yes, or we would build a new AR to go with it. I do want to just emphasize that there's language in version two, version one, that says Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, that those positions are not moving forward. So we would change that language to Superintendent or Designee.
Thank you, I was wondering about that, that makes perfect sense. So just to repeat that, we would change it to Superintendent?
Superintendent or Designee.
Or Designee, okay. Is there any more discussion? Questions? I have one question, I think, and maybe this is me not seeing it, but I feel like when we, the very first time we saw this, it included a form that Judy had asked you to remove. So this is like the one point to
Great, great question. That form will become the AR.
Okay, so that form is amendable without board approval?
Yeah, the administrative one.
Okay, that's great, so I appreciate that distinction. Judy?
Were there two things, there was a form and then there was a chart or a, there was, there were two hyperlinks. One was a form and one was something else.
I think they were both for, I think they're both forms, but I can look it up. So they will be part of the AR that gets put together.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, oh.
If, I believe what we would need to do would be to make a friendly clarification or a friendly amendment to the motion that would be to, if you were to adopt one, that it would be to adopt it with the change in language to Superintendent or Designee. I'll take that as firmly then.
Okay, so then we are voting on the motion to adopt version one with the shift in language to reflect that it would go to the Superintendent or Designee. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Okay, we have ayes, but the motion passes, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Kirthy, did you raise your hand, aye or nay? Aye? Okay, so we, the motion passes with five ayes and one nay, with ayes from Alicia Hayes, Maya Rasa, Gordon Leibert, Michelle Shu, and Kirthy Hasidra Kaufman, and a nay from Judy Newman. Thank you. Next on the, on the agenda is an action item around a decision regarding the complaint. A decision was tabled from the last meeting, this is the complaint that is March 14th, off the top of my head. Would somebody like to make a motion? Gordon?
I'm not totally sure of the language, but I guess I would like to move that the board adopt a resolution of censure against a member or board for her behavior in the, in the issue that was raised in this complaint.
Is there a second? Michelle? Okay, so Gordon Leifer moves that we adopt a, a resolution or statement?
Whatever, is there?
It's a man who does a statement.
Statement.
Okay. Uh, Gordon Leifer moves that we adopt a statement of censure, um, around, I think that's board, board member or board for the behavior that was outlined in the complaint. Seconded by Michelle Shu. Is there, uh, a discussion or questions? Alicia?
So, before when we discussed this in our third attempt, we talked about having an opportunity for our board member to respond. And it seems we are not offering that opportunity to board member or board. And when I read this, all I have is what, what the complainant said was said. So before I could vote on this, I would leave my due diligence to see the post. I would have to see the post. I don't know what predicated this, what came before. But as I'm reading it, it's like, she's upset because a board said, "You are a racist who said I was uppity in your post. So I expect nothing decent from you." So it seems this is a, a discussion on a Facebook group that I know you, Maya, and Gordon belong to. And I'm not sure about Michelle or Kirthy. Uh, Michelle's saying no, and I can't see Kirthy's picture. And Judy, and Judy is not. So you may have been able to see all of that, but I can't. And I don't know, so I would need like, it sounds like this has been going on. So for me, to be fair and ethical and do my due diligence, I would de-post, um, maybe like for two months to see how this tiff between these two people has been moved up to us censuring a board member with just one-sided and not giving the board member a chance to respond. I think it's a horrible precedent to set. Do I like what's being said out there? Absolutely not. I do not support that. I do support fairness and I do support a person's right and ability to defend themselves. Again, you and Gordon have insight that I don't have. So if you could get me the last two months before this blew up, of, of all the posts that are said on that website, if I can get a flavor of that website, like I get, I've heard things that are said there. They sound pretty, uh, there wouldn't, things I wouldn't say or comments or criticisms. And people have their right to do that. So, that's my two cents. And I really hope our board will not do this to the next board. I hope you will not set this precedent of one-sided retaliation. Um, I know this person that brought the complaint has said she's looking to protect Maya and Gordon, to support them. Doesn't seem like a good reason to do this, but that is her intent. So, those are my concerns. If you could address those concerns, I would feel more likely to move forward with this.
Thanks. I, I, I have.
Are you thinking?
I'm just asking for a clarification.
Thank you.
Because you say that it is a, that she states that she's.
Not here, but it's been stated in the community. I think.
What was stated?
Uh, it was reported to me by someone, reported to me by someone. I trust that her goal and stated to them was that she wants to support you and Gordon for the way you've been treated. And there is a similar statement in there. But if, I can pull that back if, if you're concerned that that's not true, that she doesn't wanna support you guys in the way you've been treated.
I, I heard you saying defend. And I do question whether we bring in, um, reports from the community into this or if we look at it based on what was submitted in the, in the complaint itself.
Guys, I missed the first part. You don't wanna, you don't think we should bring in?
I, I, I don't think, I think that when we look at complaints, we're supposed to look at them based on what is shared with us, not, I have somebody who told me that this is why they believe this is happening.
That's fine, but do you believe we need to go deeper? Or you, I'm confused. Are you saying we don't need to see what was said before or after this? And how it kind of got to this place? Or we just take what is said here as truth?
I, I, I believe that that's how we've handled every single complaint that I've been a part of, is we handle the complaints either by looking at the materials given to us by the complainant or by asking for an investigation or a hearing. We rejected both of those things.
So now we're jumping to this other place where we don't have an investigation right here? Maybe we need to go back to the investigation because we haven't handled other complaints like that. We actually are investigating other complaints.
Right, we're investigating the other complaints about, that were filed under the category of racial harassment, correct?
Correct, but we haven't had a complaint like this that was filed that we actually moved forward. So that's, it's, that was more interesting. I mean, it may be the same, but it's, we're talking.
Right, I, I think we actually had quite a few that we looked at that were about behavior on social media. Go ahead, Judy.
I just wanna say that we did rule out the hearing. We didn't do a, an investigation. And I think what Alicia's saying, or maybe this isn't what you're saying, but what I would say is getting a fuller picture would be important to me. And, um, the actual places these posted, posts took place, not that I, I, the others were public, Facebook these. I mean, I don't see, I did not see the whole conversation. Investigation might have brought that, that should have brought that out so you get a fuller picture. So I don't believe we voted on that. But getting more information, and that would have been our tool to get that, would have been, I think, a better route to take because I do feel this is, for me, out of context.
Right, unfortunately, we didn't ask for that two weeks ago. And now we are at the limit. We've already received an extension. And we don't have, we haven't had another one granted to us to extend it. Today was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Well, you went back and forth. Gordon?
Uh, I, I have to say, offense very frustrating. We got a complaint from somebody providing the information, you know. I think, I don't have any additional information. And I, I absolutely think we have to take the complainant at her word. She said, "I am an employee who is complaining about hostile activity towards me by a board member who is illegally my employer." As far as I know, Laurel Rourke has had multiple, we had this since March. Laurel Rourke has had multiple opportunities to weigh in and share anything she wants. I proposed at our last meeting that we have a hearing on this, which is what the complainant asked for. And the board majority did not support that, or we didn't have a quorum in supporting that. And, and we came within an inch of dismissing this complaint because there was no other motion at the time. And, and if I remember correctly, you and Judy were among those who said, "We don't wanna have a hearing. You can have the complaint passed, word." And we didn't propose anything else, and we're ready to dismiss it. And we put it off to this point. And, um, I, I think, given that Laurel has chosen not to say anything, we have the information before us, we're up against the deadline. Board members chose to not do, not get additional information. And I think this is something that's been going on, it's been going on a long time. And I think that we can't duck this, the behavior of one of our, uh, one of our members. Frankly, this is, you know, part of the pattern that has been, happened elsewhere. But in this case, in this particular case against an employee of the district, I think it's incumbent on us to act, to take this to action before this.
Are there any other comments or questions? Are you moving to extend discussion? Pondering, do we need to, I was counting on you. Well, if you're counting up, going back and forth, we went back and forth quite a bit, so. I, I will put it on the table that we need to extend discussion. I think that it's, um, important that we do. All those in favor of extending discussion? Raise your hand and say aye. I'm the only one. All right, all those opposed, say nay. Okay, so it does not pass. In that case, most we wanna hear from Judy, Gordon, Michelle, or Kirthy. We can go straight to the vote. Okay, all those in favor of issuing as a resolution, a statement, a statement of censure, against Laurel Rourke, board for Laurel Rourke, for the behavior outlined in this complaint, specifically violating Public BDF. Raise your hand and say aye. Okay, we have four ayes, all opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion passes with four ayes from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Leifer, Michelle Shu, and Kirthy Hasidra Kaufman. And nay votes from Alicia Hayes and Judy Nguyen. The next item on the agenda is items for action at a future meeting. We have four items for action at a future meeting. The board is not scheduled to take action on these tonight. The first one is a hearing from Superintendent Dyke about a discussion around a reimagined affiliation with the Eugene Police Department. Everybody okay with taking a break? About?
I'd like to be.
Okay, then we will. If we don't see any objection, without objection, we'll take a five-minute break. It's 9:53. We'll be back at, let's say, 9:59. So, back to the topic we put a hold on. Discussing a reimagined affiliation with EPD. Superintendent Dyke?
Thank you. We have, um, visited this conversation earlier. There was an intent back after the decision was made on the June 2020 that at some point in time, we would revisit the conversation about what if a partnership would exist between the Eugene School District, 4J, and the Eugene Police Department. I believe it's time for us to at least engage in further conversation about what that might be, but the ultimate goal that the board authorizes for me to return to the board with some recommendations about what a re-imagined partnership with EPD might look like. And I'd love to engage in conversation, answering questions you might have.
Are there any questions or comments around the idea of a reimagined relationship? Judy?
So, do you want ideas of how that process might look? Or you do have a process that, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think we committed to revisit it, if that's what you want. Definitely.
I would take thoughts, absolutely. Probably, as if not more helpful, would be things that you know, at least at this point in time, that would be non-starter terms for a lawyer.
Does anybody have any non-starters or things to avoid? Gordon?
Well, speaking with somebody who won't have a say on this because it's gonna happen, happen until I first, I'm sure. I mean, for me, I, I would want to see a return to what we had before. And my understanding, I, I think this is from things that you've presented in the past, or maybe this is just how I understood it, is that what we were interested in was having police who would, officers who would, A, be stationed centrally as opposed to in schools, and B, who would do things that some police officers are gonna need to do anyway, that instead of having just whoever happens to respond, respond, there would be dedicated staff who were trained in, in ways that are appropriate to schools, but that they would not be doing, that there would be a division between that and things that might have been done before, that where there were things that, without you have been treated either just as a school discipline thing or not even a school discipline thing, but just like a de-escalation thing. And we don't want students put in a position where they're potentially then criminalized and dragged into criminal justice system. So I would like to see a proposal that has clarity about those roles and about what the line is between the one, what we want them to do and what we don't want them to do. Okay.
Michelle?
Michelle? I would like input from students. Everyone's supposed to be affected by this? Judy?
I'm, I'm wondering if there are any really good examples or models we can look at that other communities have done, um, this effectively, you know, and gotten input from students, but that are having safety in their schools and that doesn't require an armed, you know, police officer. I mean, any good models out there?
What I can say is that the model that we had in our schools previously with a uniformed police, uniformed armed police officer as an SRO, had at the time become less and less common. And that there was more of a youth services model that the local police department was a part of, where the police that were engaged at the district were not exclusively in an enforcement posture. So that would be more along the lines of what I would be seeking. And I, I have reason to believe that EPD doesn't wish to return to what we had in place before.
Does anybody have something else?
I think, I thought myself in the queue also.
It's, it's not only student input, but specifically students who are generally targeted or marginalized.
I'll jump in. I can say, for me, I, um, and I, I might just be repeating, but I'm just gonna speak on my own behalf, but I absolutely could not support a return to having uniformed armed police officers in our school, whether it be school resource officers or whatever different name or whatever that would look like. I would also be interested, and I, I support Michelle's proposal of suggestion of including students in the design of what this might end up looking like. And especially because the student voice that, that was so instrumental in leading to the decision to not renew that contract. I also would be curious if we could think about, one of the things I hear often about the current situation is that we don't know who shows up. Some folks are better in the school setting and with youth than others. And I would be curious about the possibility of using the funding that we would put towards this reimagined relationship into, uh, opportunities for EPD to have that type of professional development incorporated into their professional development. Because I do understand that regardless of what we end up doing, we're never gonna do to call EPD for support. Because it's part of our model. So I, I would just be curious if that relationship can be involved in, in a professional development capacity. And I'm not sure what that would look like. I'll give that to you. Judy?
In setting the groundwork, it might, I think it would be helpful, especially we'll have new board members, but I would benefit from this, to really understand what are the circumstances under which we have to call the police? And how frequently that happens, just in general? So, I know. So, I know there are some times, and I can name some of them, but maybe not all of them. And then also to have an understanding of the other supports we have and that we put in. Like I know we have HOODs in and other things. So, just to get an overall picture and then see where and if their whole, what the wholes are and what we would benefit from. So, that would be helpful. And, you know, that hopefully is all the information that's easily at your fingertips or close.
Are there any other questions or comments? Kirti, I can't necessarily see you, so if you just speak up if you have one. But otherwise, does that give you, Superintendent Dyke, does that give you a starting point to continuing the the process of doing this reimagining?
Yes, this is an item for action of a future meeting. I'll come back with some additional information on the 21st and seek it as an item for action for the board to vote to approve or to deny further conversation and negotiation with EPD.
Okay, sounds good. So, then we will come back to this on the 21st with some further information and making a decision about whether to forward any conversation. In that case, we move on to the next item for future action, which is the budget adoption of the 2023-2024 school year. Do we, so we're not voting on this until the 21st. We did get the opportunity during the hearing to ask questions. Does anybody have any questions that have not proposed since then? In which case, math can come down, but in the meantime, unless they do, you can stay seated and have. Does anybody have questions regarding the budget? Propose budget? Alright. I assume that's a good sign that we feel well informed. Thank you. The next item for future action is to approve revisions to Board Policy JGAB, use of restraint and seclusion. This is a first read coming to us now, so Rob, if you want to come on down and talk to us about this, that would be helpful.
So, this is a policy that ODE, OSBA added some language that's required. It's minor but very important. And it's on page 128 of the language. The use of a seclusion cell is prohibited. And those are spaces that people have made to have freestanding self-contained unit to isolate students. So, those are not, those are prohibited. So, that language is in this new policy. And that's basically the revision for it.
So, does anybody have any questions about this revised policy?
If you want to say that the MAMP system that we have to train people how to de-escalate students is a really good program, that a lot of staff have been trained in, and that's, you know, putting your hands on a student, we're physically blocking them. It's like the last thing that we do in our enrichment cycles. And then all of those instances where that occurs needs to be documented and turned into an annual report to ODE, so.
Are there any questions? I have a question, but I'll wait for others if they have them. I see in here that seclusion cell is defined for us as a freestanding self-contained unit that is used to isolate the student from other students and physically prevent students from leaving the unit or cause the student to believe that the student is physically permitted from leaving the unit. So, I understand very clear level that the rooms in some schools that were previously used for this would no longer be designated as seclusion rooms, for example. My question is, does that definition also extend to spaces that have a different designation but might be used for this purpose? Whether it's like a principal's office or a classroom when the rest of the class is at recess? So, can that cover those spaces that have a different official designation but have been used functionally to put this practice in place? Now that those, because we've had those ones shut down for a while now. But the practice happens in spaces that aren't those formally designated. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. It's a good question. I think the, you know, I could ask, I could get on OSBA and find out exactly what the, you know, because it says the use of the seclusion cell is prohibited. But can you use a different space that would ordinarily be used for a classroom or an office as a seclusion cell? And I would say that that's not allowed either.
So, maybe our policy could even, and this would be a question for OSBA, could even be worded to prohibit the practice of seclusion so that it's not just limited to the practice of seclusion, these quote-unquote cells? That's terrible language. I'm almost embarrassed.
Yeah, I think, and if you look at the definition of what seclusion means, you can kind of see that they kind of address that, the issue of a cooldown space or, you know, where students have an opportunity to kind of regather themselves for a brief period of time, is different than this notion of this location where you're just gonna isolate somebody and lock them in there, not allow them to leave. So. I think that's the content, the seclusion cell, you push students somewhere and then they can't get out. It would be that.
So, if that's the case and it covers the entire practice of seclusion, then why do we need number three if no form of seclusion is allowed?
I think that's why they added this, just to make it super clear to districts that you do not make these spaces and you don't use spaces, you know, this is just a regular practice. Yeah.
So, just to clarify, it seems that this new policy is is restricting seclusion or stating that seclusion, regardless of how it's defined, because it's defined in a few ways, is not allowed. Is that correct?
Yeah, the notion of, if you look at that versus use of restraint or seclusion. Now, this is, this policy has been in play for a long time. This is just the one addition is the cell notion, a space where students locked or not allowed to leave. Yeah, seclusion in itself is a permitted practice. If you, you know, if you're doing it according to these definitions and then you're reporting how often that had to happen. So, every year, we turn in a report to ODE on how many times students have been restrained, secluded. If any of those were done by someone who wasn't trained, et cetera. So, it's an annual report.
It's a little confusing. Any student being restrained or secluded within a district, whether in an emergency or as part of a plan, shall be constantly monitored by staff for the duration of the intervention. So, that includes seclusion?
It's okay to do seclusion. It's not okay to have a seclusion cell, which is a locked space, a freestanding locked space.
So, then that does mean that it's okay to seclude a kid in the principal's office or inside the classroom and the rest of the class?
Yeah, according to these definitions, yeah. But when that happens, you need to fill out a report. And that's, it does say that this annual report is provided to the board. It sounds like that hasn't happened before. You haven't seen it? Okay.
So, do you guys go for it?
Oh.
Sorry.
Two things, one is just to say, I don't think I've seen it in four years. It's possible that it was presented by a listener and forgetting, but I don't remember seeing it. Also, just wanted to ask, I have heard from some parents that what happens to their kids is that somebody technically doesn't lock a door and like keeps a knee in, but basically holds the door closed so the kid can't leave. Is that permitted?
I am not the expert on that. That would seem, that would seem that that would be something that would definitely need to be reported.
If we could.
But we can, we can be the experts here.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Judy, and then Superintendent Dyke.
And, oh, and, did you want to say something? No, I think in clarification, I'm pretty sure that if you're holding it close with your knee, that would be prevented from leaving and not okay. That's what I would report as someone who knows these rules. And just, OSBA, so probably what happened and why we're being asked to do this is there was a change in the federal regs or laws. And so, we're just reflecting that in our state. And so, my guess is there were some lawsuits or some issues that came up that they clarified this. So, that, I think it's simply that reason, especially if OSBA is adopting, you know, changing these rules, it's to match that. And that's often how things get put in. So, I think, it sounds like 4J is really implementing the intention of the law and not having these workarounds, but you need to put them in because the federal governance requires it. Unless someone's holding a knee against a door.
Andy?
That was what I was gonna say. It doesn't say secluded and prevented from leaving by lock. It's secluded and prevented from leaving. Or causing the student to believe they can't get out, so.
So, that could be a very fine line if a student is psychologically convinced that he's prevented from leaving. You know, it's when an authority tells you, you can't leave a room, and that can start to feel like you're prevented from leaving. I also would love to know from OSBA if we could, it says that seclusion is permitted under the following circumstances. The students may here pose a reasonable risk of imminent and serious bodily injury to the student or others. I'm concerned that they would even have a practice in place of, we're concerned about a student harming themselves, but not necessarily others. Wouldn't seclusion be counterproductive to ensuring their safety?
They have to be supervised at all times.
So, they're not allowed?
Correct.
So, it's seclusion from peers? Are there other questions?
You can definitely find out with the annual report and get the people that are trained folks in this.
I would, I would love to understand what the, what the level of perceived imminent harm to oneself or someone else looks like in terms of, I mean, it doesn't have to come to me today, but I'm just, I'm just concerned that this really impacts our, you know, sort of, probably impacts our disabled students more than any other category of student. And that makes me really, really concerned. So, I'm glad that this is before us, super happy that we're banning cells or that we're prohibiting, prohibiting cells, but I'm just.
And I think the other thing that on number nine there, the demographic characteristics, that's an add to the policy as well. So, you're required to report out on all of the different, whether it's disability, race, gender, et cetera. This is the disarray again. So, more work to do.
Will we be able to see that report before we?
I'm gonna find out with the cycle, when it's due every year to ODEs. I'm gonna find out if that's in the Friday memo.
Great. And it might be nice if we're voting on this in a public meeting. It might be nice to include that in our package. I think that that's information that, as uncomfortable as it is to share publicly, I think there's people that would like to know that. Judy?
Yeah, the, I mean, the information you've been collecting now for probably at least 10 years. So, there's, you could see the prevalence or whatever. And to your question about a definition in the MAMP training and others, there's a very clear definition of what danger, imminent danger is to self or others. So, we could get you those definitions and like everything, I think they're really thought through. But it becomes in the implementation and the heat of the moment, you know, there are, I'm not defending or not defending, but I'm not sure it always gets implemented with fidelity. But those definitions exist.
I think it's pretty fair to assume that it doesn't always get implemented. But I'll be, I'll be careful. Are there any other questions? I think we left you with more questions than they, that'll help us. Thank you, Rob. So, Rob, you just stay right where you are because you're gonna talk to us about proposed board policy BFA about local wellness.
Okay, so this is, this is just basically a trailer for future, future things to happen. The, what this name has done is incorporate wellness to be all kinds. So, when we think of our third, our third goal, you know, students and staff, safety and wellbeing, it really, the policy recommendations from OSBA, OSBA is to expand the physical P minutes, the mental health connections, the, all the food, nutrition, wellness, all into one policy. So, what you see here is the old local wellness program, which was, which was a few pages, and then a very lengthy and detailed local wellness with all the things that incorporate the future. So, this is really a six-month project. This is a long, this is something going into next year that, that we, we hope the board will want to take on and work on because it would incorporate all of multiple stakeholders. And the law requires a triennial progress assessment. So, a report once every three years of whatever happened and how it's going. But it also requires that the district set goals for wellness. And so, it's, it's something that worked, it's gonna need time and work session to kind of figure out what that might look like. But this right here is basically everything we could put in it, but don't have to. So, it obviously is gonna require some discussion, decision-making, and priority setting. But the big idea is incorporating and integrating all of the different aspects of wellness into a policy, setting goals, and reporting on progress on those once every three years.
Do we have any questions, comments? Sounds like we're gonna be giving a lot of opportunities and more comments.
Yeah, so you won't see this as a second read or as something brought on, but just something to know that this is, this is. but just something to know that this is, this is work for the future.
So, is this going to come back this fall?
I would, I would think it might be a good word, mature topic, but we'll leave that to you folks.
Yeah, I think it takes some time to look at it, if they're treating, they'll come back several times over the fall. I think as you read it, you'll see that it does provide a lot of opportunity for us to incorporate multiple dimensions of wellness, like Rob said, and will also require us to get together a pretty wide-ranging group of stakeholders to participate in the discussion and deliberation.
Yeah. And when you think of what the district's got, what with our food program or nutrition program, this, you know, we've got a world-class program. And that was because people intentionally made those improvements, so.
Are there any other questions, comments about this one? Okay, thank you, Rob. Last on the agenda are suggestions by the board for considerations of items at a future meeting. Other items the board has suggested, do you have suggestions for any of these for our last meeting of the year? All right. Then our next regular board meeting is scheduled for June twenty-first. Before I close, maybe I just want to remind you all that we go back into a second session from here. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at ten thirty-four P.M.